Welcome to the City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting for July 20, 2021. It is now 6:34. And may we have a roll call, please. Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Bossman?
Present.
Councilor View?
Here.
Councilor Yussa?
Here.
Mayor Fertin?
Where are they?
Present. Mayor Baxter?
Present, thank you. Now, is there any identification of an actual or perceived conflict of interest for any of the city councilors on the agenda item tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation. And a couple of items I wanted to mention before we start. One is that we did receive some written comments tonight, so they will go into the record. And the other is, by a raise of hands if you're willing, would you all let me know how many of you are here to talk about the OK Garden?
That's pretty good.
Awesome. So what I would like to say is, in the interest of us being finished before tomorrow, if you concur with what someone before you has said, please just step up and say, "I concur," you know, when it's your turn to come up to the podium. That way, we'll move through faster. If you have something to add to the conversation which is important for us to hear, please do so. So don't feel like we're asking you not to speak. That isn't the case. We just want everybody to be able to speak. So I also wanted to mention that the process for a project like the Gardens would go through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So when you are presenting with us, you definitely want to go and sit down and chat with Parks and Rec Advisory Board, because what they do is they make an official recommendation, whether it be through the budget process or a separate recommendation to City Council, in order for us then to make a decision on purchases and projects. And so far, that process hasn't happened. I just wanted you to know that. We did not receive any formal recommendation from either the Parks and Rec Board or the Natural Lands Board, which is why we chose not to move forward with discussing it. So if it goes through our process, they have the chance to evaluate it, given all the other options that they have with the dollars that they are allowed to spend on projects like this. So they are the best avenue for it, but it's great for us to do it for you. So thank you for being here. And I wanted to also announce that we have two translators here tonight that you will not be seeing, but they're online so that people can listen in, and their names are Diane and Valentina. And Diane and Valentina, if you can hear me at the end of public participation, I'm going to ask you if you received any comments that you need to relay to us, because we won't have otherwise. Does that work? Thank you. Okay. All right. Ms. Phillips, may I get the list? All right. Stephanie Moran, please. So you each have three minutes to speak. Please stand at the podium, because, Stephanie, please stand at the podium. Yeah, there's a speaker above you, then everybody will be able to hear you, not just us. And if, you know, just let us know if you're a city resident or not, that'd be great.
Very good, thanks. My name's Stephanie Moran. I live at 1180 Oak Drive. I'm a retired educator of 40 years, and served on the 9R School Board for almost eight. I'm here to support Durango's Ohana Kulianna Community Garden. Can we agree that we preserve what we value? As a community, we say that we value open space, fresh and healthy vegetables, and clean air for ourselves and our children, all of which this garden space offers our students and citizen gardeners. Durango City Council has the opportunity to keep a bit of Durango as the Durango that we all know, love, and recognize by working out a compromise with Mr. Lee to keep this garden in its present form versus yet another unnecessary loss of open space. Let's preserve this small but vital paradise versus putting up the no longer proverbial parking lot. We preserve what we value, and our parents, families, teachers, and school board have agreed that we value combining rigorous academic content coupled with literal, hands-on learning, because it's the best way to ensure that learning sticks to our minds and neurons for the long haul. Want to create future scientists who create a better world? Charlie Love does this daily, and his involvement in this garden shows his commitment to practicing the walk, not just the talk. Want to create better thinkers and writers? The Community Garden Project achieves this through the experiments he conducts and their follow-up work. Want to foster the incredible impact of intergenerational exchanges that happen both naturally and intentionally between young and elders' minds? Watch this occur every day in the garden. Fort Lewis College is into vibrant internships and collaborations between and among local and regional educational entities. The Department of Environment and Sustainability folks currently have a large grant designed for collaboration with 9R for environmental science, learning, and community outreach. Many of L C students interested in organic and sustainable farming have been placed in internships around the community, and this local garden is a perfect placement for them in the future. This all sounds tailor-made for the City Council's support. One last thought. Approach Mr. Lee with the beautiful idea of some monetary loss for a far more lasting gain as his positive legacy by reducing his asking price substantially and renaming of the garden in his honor, the Bob Lee Senior Community Garden. Please, do good for the good of our thousands of past, present, and future students who have gained and stand to gain intellectually, emotionally, and spiritually by keeping the Ohana Kulianna Garden exactly what it is, a sustainable, working paradise on earth. Who could ask for more?
Thank you very much. One more request I might make is, please hold your applause until the end, because otherwise, we'll spend half our time applauding. Okay, thank you. So Joanne Mattingly?
I'm glad to see everybody here. My name is Joanne Mattingly, and I live at 118 Ryler Drive, and I'm also a member of the garden. I would like to express my thoughts and opinions on why the City of Durango should consider purchasing the community garden. As a society, we have moved away from local food production to outsourcing our food supply to large centralized corporations. This has made communities dependent upon external shipments of food. As we have witnessed the past year, supply chains have become disruptive for various related reasons to COVID. Around the country, fruit harvest, potato harvest, meat production, and milk were spoiled because the facilities had to shut down due to COVID positive cases occurring within their facilities. In addition, we have witnessed rising transitory and inflation costs. We are experiencing times of uncertainty. As a community, we should value and set aside space for a community garden. We should protect the garden space as a place for gardeners with skills, experience, and knowledge to gather and practice their gardening skills together. This garden is full of multi-year passionate members who have poured their hearts into building this self-sustaining plot. They have co-created systems to provide for ample nutrient-dense soils, conservative watering systems, and demonstrative gardening techniques we all learn from. This has been an ongoing 13-year effort that has continued to be successful year after year with returning members participating. By providing a space for people to practice their gardening skills, they're able to experience a form of self-sovereignty and personal freedom. It's a chance for people to gain confidence in their ability to grow fruit from seed to harvest. It's a chance for people to learn skills after harvest, such as ways to save seeds, ways to prepare the ground for next season, and how to jar and can food. The garden also has been actively utilized by the elementary students at Riverview. The students get to witness life from seed to harvest with Mr. Love. I've heard multiple students say it's their favorite class. Students get to see all the other plants grow in the garden and what it means to participate in a cooperative space such as a community garden. It will stick with them through adulthood and inspire them to create gardens with their families and in their communities. Unless you have an opportunity with all the right resources, it may be difficult for an individual to gain hands-on experience growing food from seed. As a community, we should recognize what we have in front of us, what has gone into building it to what it is today, and as a community, appreciate what it means to grow food within a community. There's a lot of trial and error through that goes into it and is best learned through experience, from soil contents to soil pH to soil temperature, to humidity, the wind, when to harvest, how to prune, all about different types of plants, perennials, annuals, and about medicinal herbs. And this is a profound, unique resource, and we humbly ask you to not dismiss it without careful consideration. Let's be proud and shine the light on this precious community resource.
Thank you. Mike Wagner?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you for, like, serving the town and everything. I appreciate that and acknowledge that. My wife and I just purchased a home directly behind the garden, and that was a huge incentive for us. The truth is, like, I would drop anything to be here right now. It's very important to us in that way, and I think this goes to show that, you know, so many people rally around this. It's actually a part of our identities and our cultural fabric and our community and so many other things. That's really hard to understate. Something I'd like to just share is, like, the economic potential of this land and this space as it is is tenfold that of a residential community, in terms of the opportunity to host educational workshops, research that can be done, concerts, farmers' markets, public events, and so on and so forth. The other piece that can't be understated is the physical and social structure that's been put into this place over the last 10 years. The permaculture berm that exists around the outside, that's a community space for us as gardeners and the kids that come in through the school, is filled with edible food that you can literally forage off of nine months out of the year. That has taken a decade to grow and to put in. The compost that we use is irreplaceable, because it comes from the land itself. The land is straight fire in terms of, it's black, you know? The earthworm activity that's in there is remarkable. That's why I think research is actually something that's a huge potential through the systems in this community. Let other people speak to the community itself, because the mentors in this audience are people that you meet once in a while. It's scary to think that it's on the chopping block, so to speak. So, thank you so much.
Emily Roth?
Hi. So we wanted to give a bit of an overview to the garden. I was wondering if it would be okay to take my time and also my roommate's time?
Excuse me. Are you a city resident?
Yes, sorry. I am a city resident.
Thank you.
Limit 125 West.
And you wanted to take whose time?
Elaine Thomasini.
Is that Elaine there?
Uh-huh. Thank you so much. I'm just gonna share my screen. We put together a few slides. We just wanted to share with those the garden itself and allow them to sort of come into the garden with us. So we put together some photos and some slides about the garden. Let's see if we can actually share this. So our name means community responsibility, and we take this really seriously. So we're committed to providing organic, healthy food for our community. We practice composting, water conservation, recycling. We're made up of individual plots as well as communal berms, where we promote native species and pollinators. We culminate culinary and medicinal herbs, and we also use that space to work with erosion and ensure that our soil stays healthy. So we have 12,000 square feet of garden space. We have 45 total plots, and six of those are dedicated to Riverview Elementary. And in the past 10 years, we've made quite the impact. So we donate over 1,000 pounds of organic produce to local nonprofits. We harvested over 30,000 pounds of organic produce, and we've impacted over 1,000 students. If you're not familiar with us, we're located right near the Riverview Elementary School, which helps foster that relationship. And we bring this to you today because we know that Durango values gardens so much that it's in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. It's actually rated as the fourth top priority for investment for recreation facilities. It's rated as the 10th most important recreation facility to households, and it's also the seventh recommendation for facilities and amenities. So why this space? So in the past 10 years, we've made considerable improvements to the infrastructure. We've put in a pavilion, an education amphitheater, areas, tools, composting, perennial berms, not to mention the sheer amount of landscaping that went in to make this space workable. It's also really close to Riverview, as I mentioned. And I also want to mention that land needs three years without synthetic inputs to be considered organic. So if we were to move, we would essentially be sort of resetting there. And it's actually been considered for residential development in the past, but it was rejected because of concerns around sewer and around issues with fire and access. Also about me, I am new to Durango, and this was actually one of the key factors for me deciding to move here. As an apartment dweller, having access to a garden was a game changer, and it's given me so much more than just vegetables. It's given me access to a community. It's taught me about growing at elevation, conserving water, which becomes more and more important in this hotter and drier climate that we're in. We also realize not everyone's been to the garden, so we wanted to share a video. This comes from a clip that the DGO Television put together in 2016 as part of the garden project for Southwest Colorado. It does start with an unfortunate thumbnail, so my apologies. I know you're in the audience.
When we first started this garden, this land, about two acres, was just rocky, compacted subsoil. And Bob came in and moved a lot of land and put in the fence, the deer fence. He put in the irrigation. We brought in topsoil for the bed. And then the gardeners got there, and they spent hours upon hours sifting through this rocky soil so they could get to a point where they could grow some food in there. The garden is made up of 45 plots, which are gardened by about 35 groups. Those are families, groups of friends, a church group, Southwest Center for Independence, and of course, Riverview Elementary. Those plots are about 150 square feet each. Some people have double plots. Some people have half plots. We partnered with Home Depot to put in a wheelchair-accessible patio-style plot, and that makes it easier, again, for wheelchairs to be on there, but also anyone who's a little more unsteady on their feet. We want this garden to be available and enjoyable to everyone in our community. You can become a member, and to do that, you pay $75 in member dues, as well as contributing two hours a month of volunteer service. That volunteer time allows us to take care of the garden outside of everyone's plot, including the food forest, the insectary, pulling lots of thistles. We also have an option for people to contribute additional hours in lieu of that payment, and we do have scholarships available as well. Via Ohana Kulianna Community Garden turns into this outdoor living laboratory when Charlie Love, the science teacher at Riverview Elementary, brings all his students down.
You would be collecting energy from the sun if you were planting?
They get to explore the garden, experience new foods by planting and planting their garden in the spring, and then coming back the next year and getting to harvest it. Seeing the joy on their, those kids' faces is something exceptional.
People come here, learn how to garden, and then plant their own backyard.
I think the success of this garden really goes back to the community, just like the garden's name, Ohana Kulianna, which means community responsibility. And that really started with Bob Lee. This land was going to be used for a development, but the neighborhood wasn't too happy about that. The land is actually owned by Little Platte County. And at that point, Bob Lee stepped in and proposed a community garden.
And it wasn't by design initially, but I partnered up with Garden Project of Southwest Colorado.
No, over time, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Finney?
Thank you. I don't know what I can add necessarily to that video, but I would like to try. And I'm very pleased to hear that no decision had been made about this property yet. We had heard that there'd been an executive session. If there had been, we would certainly like to know what the content of that session was, but that's up to you. But we would certainly like to have that considered as something that you'd explain to us if there was such an executive session. But many of us here tonight only seek to really inform this council of some key facts about the garden that the council may not know. We believe that once this council knows more fully, understands the value, you will schedule a timely study session that will include the community participants in helping this council to evaluate this as a community resource. And I want to share just a few things about that. We've seen some media posts that said, "We're a kind of exclusive place." I want to hopefully dispel that just a little bit. We have over 40 plots, and most of those plots have three to four people gardening in them, not just one. And that means that nearly 100 people a year participate in this garden. And for the eight years that it's been actually gardening, that means somewhere between 800 and 1,000 city residents have participated in this garden. And they've come from every neighborhood of this town, including Three Springs and Twin Peaks. So we're not that. Only two of the gardeners who were long-term gardeners there come from the immediate neighborhood. So we have a lot of groups that work with us. You saw the one that Home Depot made. There have been two such handicap groups that are there. We have been partnered with the AmeriCorps, and we built a wonderful amphitheater that the Botanical Society, the Rose Garden Group, and Southwest Seed Society used for events and activities, in addition to Southwest Garden Project, participating there and having fundraisers there. We have worked with the Animal City High School with their interns and with the Juniper School. The High Noon Rotary has participated there as workdays with us, and we have provided a place for Little Platte County Sheriff to bring people who are completing court-mandated projects to, as a safe place to do that. It shows that the OK Garden isn't an engaged community group, reaching well beyond the confines of gardening into true community relationship building. Hopefully, this council will want to learn the full story, and will schedule a needed study session to get a complete picture of why this resource is of a value to the city assets.
Genevieve, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name.
Hello. My name's Genevieve. I live on Ford Drive, 611. And I will just second that I share my plot with four others. My name is Genevieve. I'm 26-year-old, lifelong Colorado resident and a member of the OK Community Garden. I'm here today to ask for your reasoning behind turning down this incredible community resource at less than half its market value and to respectfully request your reconsideration at a study session. I am a full-time senior wilderness therapy guide in Durango, so I work 15-day shifts with adolescent boys in treatment for severe depression, anxiety, substance abuse, or any number of issues that have made it impossible for them to participate in society, some of them for years. After nearly two years of working in wilderness therapy, I can attest to the importance of outdoor activity in promoting mental health. The American Psychological Association lists benefits of green spaces, including improved attention, lower stress, better mood, reduced risk of psychiatric disorders, and even upticks in empathy and cooperation. There are more than two dozen peer-reviewed studies to back these findings, and I see it every week in the students that I work with. OK plays a critical role in the mental health of our own residents. It has been a haven for me after each two-week shift at my high-risk, high-stress work environment, and it is largely why I choose to live in this neighborhood, a five-minute walk from the garden. I see the importance of the garden on others' mental health as well. The garden grants outdoor access to residents with disabilities, elderly people, and those living in apartments, all who may not be able to drive somewhere or hike and engage in green spaces in a way that is conventionally outdoorsy. Your mission statement is to improve quality of life for our entire community. Your vision to provide an authentic, diverse, multigenerational, and thriving community. And listed in your values are teamwork, service, and well-being. A garden that brings together a wide spectrum of community members of all ages, from schoolchildren to retired citizens, grants accessibility to the outdoors, requires four hours of monthly volunteer work per plot, and contributes to sustainability education certainly fits that bill. If you truly abide by the mission , vision, values that you proudly proclaim, then you will reconsider the importance of the OK Garden at its current accessible location adjacent to Riverview Elementary School. In 2022, I plan to pursue my master's in teaching and become a school teacher in the Four Corners region. I want to start a career here, and I want that to be in a city that values quality of life for our future generations. Please reconsider your decision. Development of this land is irreversible, and we will lose the unique therapeutic, ecological, and property-value-enhancing green space that this is. Please invest in our community. Thank you.
Allison Godfrey? Thank you very much, and we appreciate that. We take that just as seriously as the other public comment. Thank you. Keith Thompson?
Keith Thompson and I live at 2930 East Fourth Street in Durango, and I moved here about three years ago and got involved with the Community Garden and Manassou Kitchen Garden and the Garden Project. And I've worked at community gardens in Arizona and Central New York and in quite a few different places. I taught middle school science for 20 years, and community is important to me, and gardening is important to me. And I just want to talk about the education in the community that I've observed, that I've been aware of while I've been working at the Ohana Kulianna Garden. I've spent hundreds of hours in the last few years working in the garden with kids, with kids from Riverview and with adults. And it's not just, it's not just the education of gardening and understanding concepts of biology, ecology, horticulture, and agriculture, earth science, and soil science in particular. There's a lot more. It's an opportunity for people to work together for a common goal, and that common goal is a good goal, growing food, growing healthy food, and taking care of the environment. I have not seen a community garden that transcends what this garden is. It's got a space for people of all ages, and it's done a tremendous amount for our community. I work with the elementary students who interact with some of the older adults, and it's a powerful, it's a powerful situation when you see that. Anyway, I think that it is an important resource we have in our community, and to create another community garden that would be even close to it would be extremely difficult. And I just hope that we keep this garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Osborne?
Hi. My name's Julia Osborne. I am a resident at 611 Ford Drive, and I am speaking on behalf of another Durango resident, a therapist at Open Sky. Dear community of Durango, my name is Nick Lenderking Brill, and I am a wilderness therapist by trade because I am an outdoor enthusiast in my bones. But as a professional in the mental health field and beneficiary of wilderness therapy alike, I'd like to speak to the healing power of nature. And I'm not just speaking of how good it feels to be outside. As citizens of Durango, we all know that. I'm talking about the direct neurological benefits of green spaces, especially for children. We are all aware of the smartphone overuse epidemic among teens. In fact, I'd estimate that 90% of my adolescent clients suffer from screen overuse, which leads to increases in anxiety and depression and decreases in family engagement and self-confidence. A kid who doesn't have access to nature reverts to the easiest thing, a phone. In this way, accessible green spaces can be a direct antidote to the factors causing teen suicidality to spike. Researcher and author Richard Louvre reminds us that time spent outdoors stimulates our imaginations. Rather than fatiguing our stores of directed attention in front of a screen, which leads to ADHD symptoms and hyper-aroused states, the wilderness encourages a sense of fascination, which allows our brains to rest and rejuvenate. With an increase in fascination comes the creativity inherent in unstructured play. Louvre's studies have found that kids who use their imaginations are more likely to be amiable, persistent, and conscientious. The apps found on phones can discourage our imaginations with their predetermined layouts and functions. Time spent outdoors on the other... Time spent outdoors, on the other hand, encourages young people to use their creativity to occupy their time. Time outdoors can also offer respite for our nervous systems, counteracting the hyper-arousal caused by screen overuse. When our basic physical needs are already cared for, nature can provide a peaceful sanctuary for our brains, whereas in a city, we have to reckon with loud noises, flashing lights, and fast cars. Because nature moves at a slower pace than the city, it offers us opportunities to pause, breathe, and emotionally regulate. Intentionally breathing is one of the many ways I teach my clients to regulate their emotions. The other coping skills I teach involve literally coming to our senses by naming the qualities of our present sensory experiences. These skills are most effective in nature when our nervous systems are relaxed enough to notice our present experiences rather than rushing forward to solve the next mental problem. When we sink into our present moment experience as opposed to allowing our minds to rush off into the past or future, we are more available to be alive. We are truly living. Nine hours a day in front of a screen speeds up time through distraction and slowly numbs our senses. On a physiological level, emotions only last thirty seconds to three minutes. It is the story we add to them that can stretch them out for a lifetime. When we allow ourselves to feel our feelings and cope with them, they dissipate. But when we continually distract ourselves from our feelings with devices or other avoidance strategies, they keep coming back more forcefully and seem all the more consuming and overwhelming. Okay, is there anyone else? I have just a little more who'd be willing to yield their time.
Chris? Sorry, say that again? Did you sign the list?
I did not. I asked if I should be able to yield time, and it was unclear. Thank you. Time in nature can also build self-confidence in children. Survival in the wilderness rebuilds the physical resiliency that we have sacrificed to ease inconvenience of our phones. We can't Google how to build a fire when we're already in the woods and cold. This restoration of physical resiliency spurs emotional resiliency as well. When we succeed in caring for ourselves, our self-esteem heightens. A device discourages us from coping with difficulty because it seems to have all the solutions to our problems. As convenient as this is, it unfortunately does not prepare us for reality. I know we aren't talking about bulldozing the national forest, but not everyone has the means or access to outdoor recreation or wilderness therapy. Disregarding the bounty of nature in our city is a slippery slope. If we allow this community garden to be developed upon, what's next? In our world becoming rapidly overtaken by cars and concrete, how can we, as conscious citizens in a privileged community, afford to let more green spaces disappear, especially one with direct ties to our local elementary school? Durango, I implore you to accept the generous offer before you and buy this garden for the purpose of conservation, not doing so as an act of irresponsibility for generations to come. On the other hand, if you have an opportunity to contribute to healthy and well-adjusted lives for the future leaders of our community, to me, the choice seems like a no-brainer, almost as simple as swiping right. Which will you choose? Thank you for your time.
Benji Halber?
Hi, my name's Benji. I live at 822 East 32nd Street. I concur with everything that's been said, and I think the only thing I want to, the two things I want to kind of pinpoint are the fact that community and culture take time to develop, and this is something that gardeners know well through working soil. But that has deep implications for this space as well. Talking with people about this garden and what has come up, I've heard variations on the, "Well, find another place to garden." It's not that simple, right? It's just not that simple. If we move it, it takes time to develop not just the soil, but the community and the culture of the space as well, right? We've put so much time and energy into developing that here and now. Further, the value of the land far exceeds whatever money can be paid for it through the relationships that are built and through everything that comes from it. So I just want to emphasize that again, as everyone has before me. Thanks.
Mia Carrasco-Sanger? Hunger? Yeah, my name is Mia Carrasco-Sanger, and I live at 216 East Sixth Ave in town. And I was the garden manager at the OK Garden for the first six years, from its inception, when it was just an empty, weedy lot, to six years later when the gardeners took on the leadership of the garden. And I think what I want to get up in here and say is just that I'm so struck. I haven't been involved the past couple of years by the strength that the garden is still going at, and I think that speaks so much to the value of what's been grown there. I was drawn to that work. I was the paid gardener manager because I wanted to create community and connection, which I think we've all kind of are painfully aware of the importance of connection after this past year and a half with COVID. And I'm now working in the mental health field, and y'all have heard some of that, the importance of that. And just to say that that deep connection doesn't come from nothing, right? It comes from having that shared experience, having that shared goal, and working through the struggles to get to it. And this garden does that. I mean, I can still feel the connection that I have with you all after all these years, and to me, that says a lot. This was one of the most just naturally intergenerational spaces that I've been a part of, accessible and obviously so healthy. And then also, with the garden project, we were tracking all the numbers of this, right? Like, what is the impact in the number form? And certainly, it was hundreds of unduplicated residents every year. And that was, of course, the gardeners and their plots, which Bruce already spoke to, multiple gardeners in each of the forty-five plots, and then, of course, hundreds of students each year with Charlie Love. And then additionally, other community members would come in for workshops and workdays. So this garden was a place that was asked for by the neighborhood. It was invested in by people and the organizations of Durango and sustained by the love and sweat and hard work of these people. So I hope that this space and these relationships will be preserved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maya Fontenot?
Hi, I'm Maya Fontenot. I'm twelve years old, and I'm a former Riverview Elementary student. I also live in Durango West. Losing the garden would be a major loss to Riverview. A hands-on approach to learning is of utmost importance in the early stages of development. For young children, their brain processes things through doing. Without the garden, science would lack the tactile approach which helps adolescents learn. At Riverview, the garden is a core part of science. We learn about a plant's life cycle and see it in motion. We see animals in their natural habitat and have conversations about their importance to the ecosystem. We watch the seasons change and talk about why some plants die in fall and others don't. We learn about why pollinators are important and why we need to save them. I know what you're thinking. You can learn all of that from a classroom. But from my schooling experience, I remember the things we learned in projects versus taking notes at a desk. Children learn through doing. I think it's developmentally important for a young child not just to learn about the world around them, but to see it in real life. The garden is more than just learning about science. It's fun. In a lot of cases, science is boring, but that's probably because you were sitting at a desk taking notes. Implementing fun into learning helps make children more eager to learn. Sitting at a desk is not fun. End of story. Sitting outside, looking at the world from a science perspective, is important to help kids understand the world around them. There are also opportunities at the garden that most every kid would never get on a regular basis. You get to eat fresh-picked produce. Eating produce helps kids learn about gardening. Most kids just see gardening as a lot of work, but when you eat the produce, they understand that the work pays off, which made me interested in gardening and composting. Other kids deserve to have an enriched science perspective. If the first few years of your education are bad, in this case, science, you're not going to be open-minded about the subject. What I'm trying to say is going to the garden were some of my favorite memories at Riverview. I'm not saying that because someone told me to. I'm saying that because other kids should have the same opportunity that I had.
Chris Paulson?
Hello, my name is Chris Paulson. I live at 423 East 30th Street, Durango. Again, I want to reiterate what Bruce Spinning has said, is we are asking for a study session with the council. We want the council involved. It sounds like we should have the, well, we would have the liaison to the Parks and Rec and also the Parks and Rec chairperson involved in this study session. And we want it to be open and transparent. Unfortunately, the way this has evolved up to this point in time, and I realize there is a real estate exception to the open meetings law, so you can conduct discussion about real estate matters that are up for purchase in executive session. But you've had three executive sessions: one, natural lands; two, parks and rec; three, the council itself. There has been nothing scheduled in terms of an agenda item on the council agenda about this matter. So what we would like is for you, first of all, to, through a transcript or audiotape, to release the council discussion on the executive session. For example, we know that there's no negotiations at this point in time. The negotiations that were ongoing are moot. The offer that Bob Lee put out there was rejected. It's on the market for twice that amount. So there's no reason to keep that executive session secret. Secondarily, what we want is the study session. Now, I speak from experience, okay? Go back prior to when this garden was actually created. Go back to 2006, and following the correct procedure at that time, myself and two other neighbors brought plans for the community garden on this space to the Parks and Forestry Board. And as we presented the plan, everybody on that Parks and Forestry Board was quite enthused. They passed a unanimous motion in favor of keeping that particular space public. So then, it was then owned by the county. So then, June 606, D-Day, myself, Mary Jackson, yay, Mary, she, me, and four others went to the council in public participation. And we talked to, it was then Mayor Sidney Zink, and basically what she said, "Well, that's all very well and good, but that property is held by the county. And if the county wants to contribute it, you know, we'll look at it." In other words, if the county wants to give it to the city. Well, then, the back and forth between the county and the city, the city wasn't going to pay, the county wasn't going to give it, so therefore, it sat for a couple more years until Bob Lee came up with his plan for the lease purchase of the property and creating a community garden. So my point being is why we need a study session with the council is we need to know where the council stands right from the outset. We don't want to have to go through a lot of more hoops in terms of going to the Parks and Rec Board and then...
Yes, I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up.
Okay. Does anybody want to yield some time? Okay.
What is your name?
Victoria Robinson.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to bring all of this up because...
No, I appreciate it. It's just that we have to...
I understand your procedure. Okay.
We have to give everybody the same opportunity and...
Sure. But I want to bring this up because I want to explain why it is that we want the study session, because it's been there, done that. We've tried all of those. We've gone that route. And essentially, then, we get slammed at the council level because the council hasn't been involved from the get-go. And, you know, we're willing to do any number of different things. Somebody has suggested pursuing a GOCO grant, and we do have an umbrella group, Onward Foundation out of Cortez, that is a 501(c)(3) group. Perhaps we can do that. But we need to figure a way that we can do this. And I know that Bob Lee was quite disappointed that the offer was rejected, but I think he would be open to trying to do some other things so that we could get the property for the community garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Adjison?
My name's Cindy Adjison, and I live at 3002 East Third Avenue, about two blocks from the community garden. And thank you for taking your time to listen to all of our thoughts and feelings about the community garden. Every once in a while, a concept is developed that sees expectations and whose whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And I feel that Ohana Kulianna Community Garden is one of those things. Like I said, I live two blocks from the community garden, and I have personally experienced the benefit of the gardens in my community. I'm a graphic designer, and when I spoke to my neighbor, Chris Paulson, about the garden's need for a website, I jumped at the chance, and I volunteered my time to create a site with my local intern from Animus High School, Taylor Shimer. I donate my design time to a select entities in which I see great community value, and I feel the gardens are one of those things. I don't actually have a plot in OK Garden, but I've got six raised beds in my own yard. And so, as I talk over the fence to my neighbors who are coming back from the community garden, there's a lot of enthusiasm about people swapping garden wisdom, talking about how many vegetables they donated, those cute schoolkids, and overall optimism about plants and life in general. And optimism in life in general is really important these days, I think. Conversations like these create community. And the positivity of Ohana Kulianna is felt way beyond its garden walls, and its benefits reverberate broadly throughout our entire community. So I encourage the city of Durango to purchase the land of Ohana Kulianna Community Garden to continue this valuable positivity and to use the land as beneficial green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Barry Crawford?
Barry Crawford, 560 East 30th Street. We are the nearest neighbors to the garden. We've lived at that place since 1987. We built our own home right there, and we have our own garden in the backyard, so we don't garden in the gardens. But we appreciate very, very much what all the gardeners do and all of the effort, funds, time, love that's been put into that project over the years. We were very worried when development was proposed back there, twice now, because we, since the school bulldozed the hillside down into the flat, that whole area is quite a bit higher than the neighborhood, than the block. And if we were to pave all of that and put roofs over the rest of it, then in fact, we would have disasters when it rains. We've had that before with mudslides and flooding and things like that for our neighbors. We're not quite as low as the neighbors. But we have been very, very, very pleased with everything that that garden has done since its... We are very, very pleased to be neighbors of those gardeners, to hear the children come down the hill every day, most of the days, and to see them out there doing those things, to interact with the gardeners at various times and in various ways. And we hope that you won't let all of the effort and time and money and love that's been put into that be thrown away.
Thank you. Charles Love?
Quick to queue up before my time starts, maybe a queue of a PowerPoint? I'm not sure how to do that. One from earlier? Is this anybody? I'm always here to help out. I'll show you guys some pictures, kids. I'm a photographer, not much of a photographer, but... Okay, my name is Charlie Love. I live at 3118 East Fifth Avenue, real close to the garden, and I'm a science teacher at Riverview Elementary School. For the last eight years, I and other teachers at the school have been taking students to Ohana Kulianna Community Garden, which is located just a short, beautiful hike below the Riverview campus. I hope I'd never be in this position defending the future of our school garden, but here we are. Tonight, I'll be discussing the benefits of the garden for Riverview students, though many organizations and families have brought children to the garden. I personally have adventured to the garden with over a thousand students. That's non, you know, that's a thousand different kids that are taken down there. The adventure starts, often starts in my classroom, when students predict or hypothesize what they'll see in the garden that day. The adventure ramps up as we hike down the Switchback Trail through a diverse forest full of native plants and animals, rocks, fossils, views... views of the valley, and the sounds of nature mixing with the sounds of bustling, of a bustling city below. We're headed to the garden to learn firsthand, with our hands, about one or more of the Colorado academic standards related to life cycles, plant and animal needs and adaptations, ecology, geology, symbiotic relationships, nutrition, et cetera, as well as math, language arts, and social sciences, among other subjects. In the garden, we apply and expand our skills as scientists, such as asking questions, recording observations, discovering and attempting to explain natural phenomena, designing and conducting experiments, sketching the natural world, communicating with each other and community members who happen to be in the garden that day, taking risks, making and learning, making and learning from mistakes, and celebrating successes and accomplishments. Beyond standards and pedagogy, what I really want to talk about today are student firsts. We all, everyone in this room has memories of the first time you learned something new or trying something new or experiencing something new. Some of these experiences stay with us as strong memories and even help to shape who we become. Thanks to this community garden, I've probably witnessed a million student firsts. The first time hiking on a trail. The first time discovering where sunflower seeds come from. Advance here.
So just so you know, I'm not doing any... Great, and you are... Great, but I also was going to say I was going to give you 20 seconds more anyway because she started late, so it's...
About 25, maybe?
Let's throw the three minutes back up there, Tom, and...
I can do it, yeah, no problem.
Charles, continue.
I won't need it all. The first time planting a seed and watching it grow and complete its life cycle. The first time growing and delivering food to the school cafeteria and seeing it on their lunch tray the next day. The first time getting a splinter, no joke. Or a blister. Or the first time having dirt under their fingernails. The first time using tools. And you might think that all kids grow up experiencing these things because most of us probably did. But I've had many students who have never been hiking in their life. They feel a huge sense of pride.
Charles.
And a huge sense of pride and accomplishment when they get to the top of this steep trail that feels like Everest to them. They learn from experience that they get stronger each time they do the climb. By the way, this barren landscape is what the garden looked like when we started eight years ago. Let's get into some more firsts and notice how different the garden looks through all the hard work of so many people over the years. Next. Many visitors to the garden will remember their first time browsing through an herb garden and taking a risk by tasting all of the different plants growing in the shared space while navigating around and observing an abundance of pollinator activity. First time thinking about where the ingredients in pizza come from and trying to understand why we can't grow cheese and pepperoni in the garden. The first time trying different hot pepper varieties fresh off the vine. The combination of peer pressure and the wonder of food coming from seeds, hard work and a lot of patience leads kids to try many foods they've never tasted before. Most kids will try almost anything that they see growing in the garden, regardless of how picky of an eater they are at home. The first time playing the role of one of the three sister crops, corn, bean, or squash, while simulating how the three crops help each other survive and thrive is discovered and practiced by the Native Americans who first cultivated crops in what is now Animus City. How many of us have had an opportunity to participate in a Native American planting ceremony featuring sacred corn, pollen, and seeds passed down through the generations? The first time holding an earthworm, seeing a snake poking weeds, or analyzing the contents of bear scat dropped on the trail the night before? Maybe the first time being on a team or the first time taking a leadership role? The first time working next to a professional farmer and later teaching what they learned to a member of the community garden? I have had many firsts as an educator in this garden and am forever changed by it. Durango is and will be a better place because of the experiences that more than a thousand children carry with them from this special place. In closing, I would argue that the Ohana Kulianna Garden is worth investing in as it is improving the future of Durango and its citizens.
Constantine Dono.
Evening, council members. My name is Constantine Dono. I live at 161 West 22nd Street. Durango has been my home and I've been a resident for almost four years, formerly working as a field guide for Open Sky Wilderness Therapy for three years. And I currently own and operate Durango Catering Company. My mother is the town administrator of the town of Indian Shore, it's a small beach town in Florida. And my aunt is the town clerk of the city of Bel Air, also a small beach town in Florida. So my hat's off to you and the space that you hold for our growing community. Firstly, I concur with everything that's been said. It's clear the OK Community Garden is not just some neglected plot of land that was once named a community garden, as can happen in so many places that I'm sure we've all seen, but it is a rich and thriving resource in so many ways. So I've got three main opening points and two supporting points. One, definition of community is a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Two, definition of a garden is a small piece of ground used to grow vegetables, fruit, herbs, or flowers. Three, community garden is a small piece of land used to grow a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. That said, I'm originally from St. Petersburg, Florida, a place consumed by cookie cutter development that struggles to maintain its rich historical identity. I believe Durango is a growing community. I understand there are presently incredible housing demands in Durango and around the country. The decision at hand sets a precedent for future demands on land development to accommodate Durango's growing community. As we consider the outcomes of this decision, there are a few questions which I hope come to mind for the deciding powers that be. First one is, what do we value as a city and a community? Second is, what draws people to Durango? And the third, how do we want to grow our community? On one final point, Tableau Farm Composting received $101,000 grant from the state of Colorado in 2020 to reduce waste by 28%. It seems that to destroy a place which utilizes these resources is to disagree with a massive state-community decision. It's clear from the turnout at this Durango City Hall meeting on Tuesday, July 20, 2021, that you would be also going against a massive local community decision. In closing, I, Constantine Dono, and the local business of Durango Catering Company offer their full support to deserve the OK Community Garden thing they offer to support their growing community.
Thank you. Was there anyone who didn't get an opportunity to sign the list? Who would like to speak on this?
I concur.
Thank you. To normally count, yes. Yeah, please, yeah. You just go ahead and go up, but give us your name and whether or not there's...
My name is Nancy Stauffer. I live at 2965 East 4th Avenue. And I love this community. My grandmother died when she was 100 years old. And my father and I went to her funeral. This was in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And after the funeral, it was really lovely because you could see the legacy that she had left behind through her, her children and grandchildren. And they were all lovely people. So I was not, I didn't grieve for my grandmother. But afterwards, my father and I walked to his childhood home where she had lived for so many years. And they had created, they, the city had claimed it and bulldozed it and, and put an off-ramp. And it was so difficult to, that's what made me cry, was that place being gone. And that was just my family, I understand. But this community garden has, has so much of each person who has spent time there that's not replaceable. There's nothing that you can do to preserve those memories, but to preserve that place. I feel like you all have this opportunity now to create a legacy as a city council and to make the choice of which direction, that's why we've elected you, which direction our community is going to continue in. And, you know, of course, we go in many different directions. The River Trail is wonderful. But this is stating the values that, that we, that we all have and, and choosing the path sending us that direction. So what I would ask you to do is take your lead from the community garden itself and just say, "OK."
So let me say that normally council does not respond to public comment. That's, that's my practice. I'm going to make a little bit of an exception here. This has been an awesome presentation by all of you and your emotion and your caring is, is palpable. Thank you. And I don't want you to think that any of us are insensitive, either to your experience or to the value that the garden brings. Because that certainly isn't the case, we appreciate that. However, we have a fiduciary responsibility. And one of those responsibilities is that all dedicated sales taxes, by ballot measure that our community approved, need to go through a process. And that process is through the advisory boards and be vetted by them. If we circumvent that, we are circumventing the ballot language and the dedicated sales tax that you all and the rest of the community passed. So as much as each one of us would have our individual opinions of absolutely yes or absolutely no, and I'm not stating either way which those are, we really need to honor the commitment that we've made to our community. So the best way to make this happen is to go through that Parks and Rec advisory board process. I, I was not there, I do not know how that stalled. But I'm, I rest assured, I believe, our city manager, Jose Madrigal, and our new Parks and Rec director, Torey Nycom, who is coming on on August 11, will make sure this goes through the proper process. It may not have the outcome that you desire, because we can't predict that. But it will go through the process that's been approved for our community so that we can get a recommendation one way or another about the OK Garden. And then we will have honored all of our community and given you this opportunity also to allow us to make a decision on it. So I appreciate your commitment and your patience and your understanding. And please, go to the Parks and Rec advisory board and get this process going for us. Thank you.
Mayor Baxter, I, I want to add a little bit to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Oluwes. That's, that's not the normal process here. So if you would like to wait till reports and actions to comment on your Parks and Rec conversations, that would be great, because that's the place for it. So thank you, we're going to move on to the next agenda.
I just wanted to put a record, say that you took your liberty, but you deny me that liberty, that's fine.
So can we move on, please, to the next agenda item? Thank you.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt. We do have one person who has their hand raised up on Zoom. If you would like to hear them, I'll give them three minutes on the clock.
I forgot to ask Diana and Valentina if they had any public comment. Sorry.
Yeah, if that works for you, we can bring in the one person from Zoom and then we can touch base with Diana and Valentina.
Great, thank you.
All right, so Erica Curly, you should be able to unview yourself and speak. And you'll have three minutes on the clock if you can just state whether or not you are a city resident.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. My name is Erica Curly. I'm a local business owner and also a resident of the Riverview community. And I would echo everything that all the community garden folks just said, that that's actually not why I'm, why I'm here tonight. But it seems that Riverview is the hotspot in town because the reason I'm coming to you is for, to express my concern about the safety and survival of the Riverview Sports Complex. And while I realize that there is no current action in front of council regarding this site, as you probably know by now, the school district is looking at building the new Miller Middle School there. And I understand that the land belongs to the school district and ultimately it's the decision of the board with what to do with it. But I just wanted to express to council and ask if you could please, within your sphere of influence, try and help save this park because it is a diamond in the crown of our park system. We have, we, the neighbors of Riverview, have a lot of concerns over the traffic impact that would happen if a school was built here and how that would impact Riverview Drive, Florita, 32nd Street, the 32nd Street traffic light. And, you know, we, we would stand opposed to any development of this land. And we just ask for, again, council to just, within your sphere of influence, to do what you can to help. And I would even go one further and ask that, and, and we have attended both public lands advisory meetings and Parks and Rec advisory board. And so I'm coming to you with the same request, which is ideally what we would like to see is, this is, again, kind of the same theme of the evening, is for city council to pursue a path towards which that you could acquire this land from the school district and keep it in the park system in perpetuity and preserve it as green open space. And similar in, in the way that's being currently transacted for Buckley Park. And I think that everything that the community garden folks have said applies to this piece of land as well. That our community values green open space, that there is a benefit, a health and wellness benefit to all of our community members in preserving it. And we just humbly ask for you to do what you can to save it. Thanks for your time and for hearing me.
Thank you, Erica. Diana, Valentina, did you have any comments that were submitted through you? Uh, we can't hear you. Tom?
See, try it now, Diana? Yeah?
No.
Unmuted.
She's unmuted.
I think she is unmuted on her end, I think it might be...
Headset?
Or something.
She did not, Mayor, if you can hear me, she says she does not have any public comments from the translation side.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. All right, moving on to consent agenda. So consent agenda, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, would you, yes.
Can we sit up and take a few minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, I'm so glad you were here. Thank you. Continue the good fight. Think we actually took a break, but, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think we could go ahead with the reading of the consent agenda, and Councilor Yusuf will be back in time for us to take the vote, since we've all documented it. I think that'll work. Phillips?
Item 6.1 through 6.6 are approval of the 6.1, the minutes from the June 1st City Council Special Meeting, 6.2, the minutes from the June 15th City Council Regular Meeting, 6.3, the minutes from the June 22nd City Council Special Meeting, 6.4, the minutes from the June 22nd City Council Study Session, 6.5, the minutes from the July 6th City Council Study Session, and 6.6, the minutes from the July 6th City Council Special Meeting. Item 6.7 through 6.9, our discussion and possible action items. 6.7 concerns amendments to the 2021 Pay Plan. 6.8 concerns an implied consent agreement for 819 Oso Grande Drive and Palo Verde subdivision. 6.9 concerns resolution R 2021-35, changing the date of the September 21st, 2021 City Council Study Session and Regular Meeting to Monday, September 20th, 2021, to allow the city council to attend the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference. And item 6.10 through 6.12 are final approval of ordinances. 6.10 is ordinance O 2021-14, approving the annexation and initial zoning 1715 Florida Road addition to the city of Durango and declaring an effective date. 6.11 is ordinance O 2021-16, granting an easement over a portion of city-owned property to fast-track communications to service Manasoupe Kitchen and Elevita Court and declaring an effective date. And item 6.12 is ordinance O 2021-17, amending Chapter 2, Section 2-16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, changing the starting time for city council meetings from 6:30 PM to 5:30 PM and declaring an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. The consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the councilman requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under item Agenda 8. Are there any consent agenda items that the councilors would like to have removed? Hearing that, will, shall we, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So now we are on to public hearings, and we have item 9.2 quasi-judicial hearing. 9.2.1, which was the public hearing to consider the Crossroads Phase 2 replat subdivision preliminary plan, has been continued to August 3rd, 2021. 9.2.2, public hearing to consider the Milton Property Rezone and Conceptual Development Plan. And do we have, oh, Dan, wonderful, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. My name is Dan Montana with the Community Development Department. This is the Milton Property Rezone and Conceptual Development Plan, overview. So this is a request from Shaw LTD as a developer for a new residential plan development, the 24 townhome units. The project would redevelop an existing 2.7 acre property that currently contains three detached single-family homes, and the conceptual design is fairly simple, and it's also consistent with other developments in the area. The current zoning and future land use is residential high density, but the proposed density is more aligned with a medium-density development at just under nine units per acre. Here's a context map showing the location of the property, aligned in red there. So we are out at the kind of far eastern edge of the city limits, about a quarter mile past the Kenra 250 and Florida Road intersection, and we zoom in a little bit, you can see this property does have frontage on both Florida Road and the future Mets Lane. The developer is improving Mets Lane, paving it to the Florida Road intersection and making some substantial improvements as part of the Entrez 2 Timber Trails development that was approved earlier this year. This development would benefit from that as well. Looking at some photos of the property, so you can see there's quite a bit of open space there. Those three existing homes are shown in these photos. I'd also like to point out the slopes, which are a bit of an encumbrance on the northern and western parts of the parcel. So there's some significant slope here. This is kind of the western side, looking at the property from Florida, and kind of slopes down to over here on the north. This is looking at it from the future Mets Lane. So the proposal is somewhat uncovered by that, as we'll see on the site plan, the units are focused in the areas of wave. So to go into a little bit more detail on this property, so it was annexed in 2007 and initially zoned medium-density. It was rezoned by a previous property owner to high-density, its current designation in 2016. Shaw LTD, the developer, acquired the property in 2018, and their design is more aligned with the medium-density designation that it was initially zoned as when it was annexed. As far as the site and design features, as I mentioned, it's 24 townhome units. They're going to be configured as duplexes, so it'll be 12 structures. The access is provided by a private drive off of Mets Lane, and then there's a gated dead end at Florida Road, so it's functionally a dead-end street. That gated dead end is for the fire department access. As I mentioned, there's those steeper slopes on the northern and western portions of the lot that will be dedicated to open space, and an HOA will need to be created to maintain the common elements, including that private drive. As for public improvements, there'll be sidewalks and landscape strips along Mets and Florida Road, of course, utilities to service the units, and as I mentioned, there's substantial improvements that are already proposed to Mets and Florida Road. So here is a site plan that has been proposed, and this is just a conceptual site plan, so this is subject to change, doesn't need to be nailed down at this phase of review. You can see the 12 structures with two units in each. They kind of share a garage wall. The access is, again, off of Mets up here, so this down here would be where the gated dead end would be for the fire department. This is the sloped section over here that's all preserved as open space. Here's some conceptual renderings of what they're proposing to build. These are somewhat smaller units, around 1,100 square feet, two-bedroom, so maybe a little bit more portable price points. Hopefully could be workforce housing in the future. So just to go into some LUDC review criteria and some staff's comments, so the LUDC review is focused on a request for a rezone and a conceptual development plan. The new zone does need to comply with a comprehensive plan. It must provide a community benefit, have adequate public facilities. Site design amenities need to constitute a high-quality environment. There needs to be adequate street access, no adverse impacts on natural resources and geography, and it must be energy-efficient as well. Staff had some comments initially related to parking and vehicle circulation, some questions about snow storage, and potentially sharing the open space amenity with properties to the north, which are also Shaw LTD is the developer of them as well. As far as alignment with the strategic and comprehensive plans, of course, this would increase inventory for housing units in the city. Like you mentioned, they are smaller two-bedroom design, so possibly could result in more price point. This proposal will need to meet the requirements of the city's fair share ordinance. We do not have a fair share proposal at this stage of review. That will be something that comes in at the preliminary phase. Again, this does align with the development trajectory for the area, and as I mentioned, would improve the pedestrian environment by providing sidewalks through Mets lanes. The Planning Commission reviewed this project on June 28th. The discussion focused on some of the same concerns that staff had related to parking and vehicle circulation, as well as, to an extent, efficiency and water usage, and also funding for the HOA. The Planning Commission did add a condition of approval, requesting that the developer help to see the HOA to provide some money for future maintenance of the common property and specifically that private drive. Following that review, they recommended approval on a 5-0 vote. We have not received any public comments on this proposal to date. Just to briefly touch on the plan development process, so this is the conceptual review, that's why it's before you tonight. If approved, the applicant will submit for a preliminary review, which will include significant amounts of detail in terms of civil plans, landscape plans, more detail on building designs, and also that fair share proposal will get covenants at that phase. That proposal as well will be heard by planning commission, you all, so it will come back before you. And the final development plan is after preliminary. That's typically done at the staff level, and it is kind of just putting up the final design points, getting the PD agreement finalized, drafted, and all those documents executed. So to conclude, the proposal does generally fit with the site. It aligns with the intent of the LUDC. There are some minor issues with parking and circulation that we feel can be addressed at the preliminary review stage. The development does align with the trajectory for the area. It does comply with the comprehensive plan and the strategic plans, and I have a motion on screen, and I believe it's the same as what's in your.
Dan, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here with any comments that they'd like to make?
I believe they may be here virtually.
Tom, do you know if there's someone in the wings virtually waiting to make a comment?
Tracy Reynolds.
Dan, what's the name?
Tracy Reynolds or Dennis Shaw. Tracy said he was planning to attend.
Let's see, Tracy, you should be able to speak right now. Okay, can you hear me?
We can, Tracy, thank you.
Great. Yeah, I do not have anything to add, and we did not have a presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment? I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there questions by council of either the applicant or the staff? Mayor Bosmans, okay? No? All righty, great, wonderful. Would you put the motion back up?
Sure. And actually.
That's okay, I think we have it.
Yeah, I think the one in the agenda document.
There are motions. A Y'all move to approve the Milton Property Rezone and Conceptual Development Plan with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and planning commission minutes and as discussed during this public hearing.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank the developer, if I could.
Yes.
I'd like to just to recognize that you're building smaller, two-bedroom, designed for workforce housing, and I think that's so essential right now, so I want to recognize that, and thank you.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy's comments? Any further discussion? Okay, may we have a vote, please, Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. So 9.2.3 is a public hearing to consider the Durango Christian Church Minor Subdivision. Do we have a staff person doing a presentation? Ah, Vicki, hi. I should have known.
Let me. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a subdivision from the Durango Christian Church, which is located at 11th and East Third Avenue, and they're here requesting to subdivide their 15,000 square foot parcel into two different lots, one which will contain the church and one which will contain the residential unit. Just a little background, this property's been for sale for a number of years, and they were not able to sell it, and so now they're coming back with a new idea where they will sell off the single-family house, use that money to do redevelopment on the church. The process is a minor subdivision, so there's a public hearing at Planning Commission and then city council, and then the final plat review will be approved at a staff level. And the property's located at 11th Street and East Third Avenue. There's some site photos of the church, and then this is the single-family house. One of the things that came up during the Planning Commission review is we requested a parking easement for a portion of the lot that's going to be behind the residential structure for joint use between the church and the house, and it just isn't, it wasn't well-defined, and I think that got some questions from the neighbors, but there will be a section of the lot that will have an easement on it. It's a joint-use easement, and it'll basically encompass like these two parking spaces. And then the house will have two spaces of their own that meets their requirement, and then the church also has some additional parking. The plat is pretty straightforward. They're doing a 55-foot frontage for the church, so that they get a setback to the north that meets our code, and then a 45-foot lot for the single-family house. There are public improvements that are required. They will have to put in a separate water service line to the church. Right now, it's a shared service line. And then they will plant four new street trees, which will help beautify that corner. And then they have a couple of detectable warning plates that need to go in the curb ramps. The LUDC criteria for subdivisions is in front of you. Generally, this proposed subdivision is compatible with the existing and improved development in the area. It's in conformance with our adopted plans and policies and the standards of our land use and development code, and the subdivision does not material compromise the safety or welfare of the public, so we do find this in accordance with our criteria. We did receive the two emails, which you did get copies in your packet, from the neighbors, and they had some real concerns about that easement and whether it was land-locking the house, and we clarified that with emails back to them. They didn't come to the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, so we assume that we addressed their concerns. The Planning Commission did hear this. There was a very little comment, and they approved it on a 5-0 vote. The fiscal impact, there is only minor fiscal impacts to the city. They will, we will get a plant investment fee for that separate service line. The street trees are required, and they'll help enhance the beauty of East Third Avenue. As to applicability with the strategic planning goals, this action does address, or we believe it meets the enhanced liability and sense of place and affordability and economic opportunity. The subdivision will allow the church pastor to purchase the home for personal use, which allows his family to continue to be part of the community. The church will then use those funds from the sale of the home to do the needed repairs and upgrades, which will allow the church to continue to be and utilize the existing building and stay in the neighborhood. And then keeping churches on East Third Avenue is a stated goal in the Boulevard Neighborhood Plan as well as the East Third Avenue Historic Design Guidelines, as churches provide an important sense of place in the community. In conclusion, the staff has reviewed the proposal. We can find this to be a rather simple subdivision. It meets all the criteria and zoning criteria and the land use and code criteria. There's a few minor items that will be addressed at final plan, but that's all we really have. I do have an amended motion that I'm going to put up here, but it is a recommendation of the city manager and the Planning Commission that the city council by motion approve the Durango Christian Church Minor Subdivision preliminary plan with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and Planning Commission minutes, and authorize the mayor to sign the final subdivision plat upon completion of all the final plat requirements as determined by staff. That last sentence was left off, so if you would use this motion, we would appreciate it.
Wonderful.
Nets, I'll leave this up if that's okay, or if you want me to take it down, I will.
Unless there's another presentation, please leave it up, and then if there is a presentation after that, please put it back up.
That'd be great.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there a conversation from the applicant or any comments they'd like to make?
Our applicant is virtual, and I don't know if he has anything, but if we can let him speak.
Do you have a name for the applicant?
Pardon?
Do you have a name for?
Yeah, John Allstorf. Allstorf.
Allstorf. John Allstorf is, Tom, do you see John in the wings to let him, let us know if he has anything to say?
All right, John, you should be able to speak.
Thank you. I don't have any additional presentation. I will. I don't have any additional presentation, I will answer any questions that you do have, and I would note that it was mentioned that we'd plant four trees on the plan, you'll see six, there's four along 11th Street and two additionally along Third Avenue, but other than that, nothing, and happy to address any questions you have.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comment on this?
No one has raised their hand on my end there.
All righty, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and do we have any questions by council for staff or the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Durango Christian Church Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and Planning Commission minutes and as discussed during this public hearing.
Second.
And authorize the mayor to sign the final subdivision plat upon completion of all the final plat requirements as determined by staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a vote, please.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussit?
Yes.
Counselor Beul?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. If I may, I would actually, I would actually like to, we're about to move into administrative, and the last administrative one that we, or the second to the last, which is 12.3, which is discussion of possible action concerning the old higher pension plans, firefighters and police and COLA adjustments, if we could, I'd like to move that up to the position above 12.1 because they're here and we have, we're going to have a lot more conversation, and I would really like to respect your time and go ahead and start this conversation if that's okay with council?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful, great. All right, so 12.2, discussion of possible action concerning old higher pension plans.
Yeah?
Oh, sorry, 12.3.
Thank you there. Councilors, this item before you tonight is to request a cost-of-living adjustment for the old higher fire and police pensioners. So the Fire and Police Pension Association, lovingly called FPPA, they administer the pension for our old higher fire and police officers. So every year, or every two years, they're required to do an actuarial study that determines to make sure that we are financially sound in the pension to pay out all the pension costs. So in that, it indicates what our required contribution is, plus three different scenarios of cost-of-living adjustments. So we met with the boards for both the fire and the pension, excuse me, both fire and police pension boards, and went over that, those reports, and the recommendation coming out of the boards was a cost of living increase for $150 per pensioner for the two-year period under the actuarial study. So that's what's before you tonight is to approve that, and I would like to invite Mr. Kaufman and/or Mr. Smith, who represent the Fire and Police Pension Board, if they choose to address the council.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Good evening, I'm Tom Kaufman, I am the retired fire marshal with the Durango Fire Department. I was with the department for 37 years. I retired, let me just take us back a little bit in history. When I joined the fire department approximately 45 years ago, I started off at a salary of $3.12 an hour, and I thought, wow, what a great job. $3.12 an hour, I get to work 24 hours a day, then I can do something else. What I found in working for the fire department, early on, this isn't today's fire department, but early on, we had limited personal protective equipment, we had limited self-contained breathing apparatus. I believe we had two when I first came on the department, and I was told that we don't really need those things, we just go in and we breathe smoke, and we breathe whatever else is in there. What we have found in the fire service is firefighters over the years now have gotten cancer, now they have gotten other problems that resulted from them not wearing enough personal protective equipment. I also found out that we were not covered, or we didn't ever contribute to Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security. That was a process that the city didn't do back then. So we found out that we had to either, as firefighters, work a second job, or we worked another job after we retired so that we got enough credits to get Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security. So it makes a lot of difference to some of our retired firefighters. I represent three widows and four firefighters that are still alive. Unfortunately, the chief that hired me, he passed away last year, the two captains that I worked away have passed away, the third captain that I worked underneath is in the hospital right now. I was also the guy that for 25 years shot the fireworks display for the city of Durango. I was glad to do it, felt what an exciting job, now I'm wearing hearing aids because we didn't have personal protective equipment for our ears, as well as the captains who ride in the captain's seat weren't wearing personal protective hearing that they wear now. So a lot of us retirees are wearing hearing aids because we weren't properly covered, which we pay for ourselves, because that's not covered under our stuff. So again, I'd make it short because you've been here an awful long time, and I appreciate that. We hopefully get your support to give us our pension with the cost of living increase and date it back like we've done in past years to January 1st of 2020. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dale Smith, I'm a retired captain with the Durango Police Department, started there in 1970 and left in 2007, so about 37 years. And same kind of history as what the firemen experienced, our equipment wasn't the best in 1970, we didn't have power steering or power brakes on our cars, didn't have power windows, so we drove around in the heat most of the time, didn't have protective vests, didn't have cages, didn't have computers. So thankfully, things have come a long ways in this city and it continues to do that. I, as a retiree, police officer, and as a citizen of Durango, I appreciate the council taking care of the police, they're an important part of us. As was mentioned earlier, Social Security didn't exist, we were under the Fire Police Pension Program, so we didn't have Social Security, so upon retirement, to be able to qualify for Medicare privileges, most of us, if not all of us, went out and obtained a job after, afterwards until we accomplished that goal. And so I do get Medicare, but I pay for that personally, and because we don't have Social Security, so any type of an increase definitely helps. We have, currently, we have three retirees, unfortunately, we've lost the other members as recent as last year and then years previously, and we have three beneficiary widows. And I know from speaking to each one of them and the retirees that they'll appreciate any consideration this council will give. So if you don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I wanted to let council know that the mayor is the liaison to those of these groups, and one of the interesting things which didn't get mentioned is that survivors actually receive a lower benefit than the original pension, am I correct about that?
Yes, sir.
Your survivor spouses receive a lower benefit than the survivors do?
When I first started on the pension board, working with the pensioners, our surviving spouses were given a pension of $50 a month. We said $50 a month, we can't do, they can't do anything with $50 a month, that's literally an embarrassment. We got them raised to 500 within a short period of time. After that, they've been getting the same cost of living increase as the rest of us. So they've been getting that $150 a month for every two years, but $50 a month when I first came on, I thought, well, they don't have a chance with this, so we did bring them along with us.
And I just wanted to mention that that's one of the reasons, instead of a percentage, that's why the dollar amount is so that the benefit does, it continues to raise for them also, in a way that makes a difference in their lives, so I just wanted to mention that part of it. Do we have any?
I have a point of clarification, and I don't know if it's for Cynthia or for you. Recommendation calls for us to make it for the plans for 2021 and 2022, but I thought you said to make it retroactive to 2020, so I wanted to clarify that, was there no increase in 2020 during the pandemic COVID experience?
Thank you, Ms. Noseworthy, that, it really is 20 and 21, the actuarial study was dated January 1st of 2020, with everything that happened in the finance group, it didn't get addressed until now, so it's retroactive back to, it is a two-year period, but it's 20 and 21.
Okay, so we just need to change it in the recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. I would not want you to miss a year of funded, of a COLA increase.
Just because you said the wrong number.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by council? All right, do I hear a motion?
Sure, it is, I recommend that the City Council by motion implement a cost of living increase of $150 per month for each of the old higher fire and old higher police pension plans for, retroactive for 2020 and 2021. I'll second.
Any further discussion? May I have a vote, please, Ms. Bosman?
Counselor Beul?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Yussit?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you so much, woman. Appreciate it.
Actually, I'm going to give you a round of applause for that one, thank you.
Thank you for staying with us.
Staying with us, and thank you for your historical service.
Okay, so on to 12.1, which is the quarterly financial update as of June 30th, 2021. Ms. Devon.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council, I'm Devon Schmidt, I'm the Budget and Strategic Planning Manager for the city of Durango. Bear with me one second while I get this presentation shared. And, let's see here. All right. There we are. So the purpose of this item for council is to discuss the quarterly financial report, revenues and expenditures for each fund. Prior to the discussion around the mid-year budget adjustment, we wanted to give council where we stand through June 30th, 2021. So I will start off with that presentation, I did want to note, this is one of our first reports that we have done in OpenGov. In the future, this report will be interactive and not PDF in nature, and so we welcome any feedback from council or the citizens as we continue to deploy these resources, so.
May I just want to point out that on all, on these particular graphs, this is year-to-date information and not just for June and just for May, correct?
Correct, so when we get to this June number, yes, that is a cumulative amount there, so that is through June 30th, 2021, for revenues and expenditures, so thank you for making that clear, and we're going through a couple of different iterations of this, and so that will be one of the adjustments we make in the future, so thank you for pointing that out. Jumping into the general fund, revenues versus expenditures, our general fund revenue analysis reflects a positive indicator, and that is due to the city would typically expect to receive 47% of our revenues. Currently, our sales tax and use tax is trending at 58% of total collections, and so that's really ahead 11% or 1.7 million in that category. If council recalls, as we went into the 2021 budget, we are expecting an 8% decrease in our sales and use tax revenues, so much more positive outlook than we are anticipating on that, and so as we're looking at our general fund revenues, we can see that there is 23 million, almost 24 million in collections to date, so that's quite a bit higher than we would typically expect. I did want to make a note that our ARP funds, our American Rescue Plan Recovery Funds, are included in that number, and those have very specific designation for uses, so, and we'll cover that in the mid-year adjustment, but I did want to make that clear for council. So one other item to note, as we continue to rebound with the COVID-19 pandemic, we are seeing the charges and services at the rec center continue to lag, so that is an item of note, specifically because in January, that's when they have a big uptick, and we missed that with the pandemic and the mask wearing, so. Before I move on to the expenses in the general fund in greater detail, is there any questions from council on the revenues for the general fund? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move on. So in the general fund.
Is Olivia speaking? Sorry, Olivia, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to just clarify, what do the colors on the bar stand for?
Those are these different categories here, and when this is interactive, the public and council will be able to come in and hover over this, and it'll tell you exactly what those are, but that ties back to the category over here in the revenue, so your biggest chunk, the blue, is taxes and fees, followed by intergovernmental, and then, I'm sorry, followed by miscellaneous, and then intergovernmental charges and services, and then other financing sources.
Thank you.
Yes. And similarly to your point, Counselor Bosman, over here we have personnel in blue, followed by charges and services in this light blue, and then the smaller categories in orange and yellow of materials and supplies and finance use only. So regarding the general fund, we did do a greater detail dive into the divisional However, year-to-date, the general fund is reflecting 45%, and typically we would expect to be at 51%. So we are showing less expenditures than we typically would at this time of year, so revenues exceeds expenditures in the general fund by 4.5 million. Looking at this on a divisional analysis, we did want to give council and the public some indicators, so we have City Council listed.
That 4.5 million, that does include 2.6 of ARP money?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I wanted to.
And so as we're looking at this on a divisional level, and this is important because we did make the request at a divisional level regarding the mid-year adjustments, we have City Council coming in at cautionary, so typically, City Council would have spent 51% and they're at 56. We do not anticipate this being an issue, and we expect council's budget will be in check by the end of the year. City Manager's Office, there's been some reorganizational changes, and so we have that listed at Needs Focus for 60% spent, when typically it would normally be 51% again with some of those reorganizational changes, we would expect to see this number actually come down in the actuals as we do some retroactive cleanup on this particular division. City Attorney, we are showing positive, as they have only spent 43%, typically at that 51%, and so again, this is a positive indicator, and we expect to be in budget by end of fiscal year. Any questions on those three divisions before I move? All right. Media, Community Engagement, we have this listed at Needs Focus, there's been a spend of 60% of their budget when they should be at that 51%. The mid-year budget adjustment will positively impact this division, and so we would expect that to also be in a good position by the end of the year. Durango Welcome Center is at 48%, Human Resources is at 46%, and so those both come in at a positive indicator. Administrative Services, we are showing positive with 47% spent. Again, expectation is that we'll be in a good position by the end of the year. Finance, we are showing a 51% for the finance expenditures. A lot of this will be taken care of in the mid-year adjustment, and so as well as Information Services, those are two both sitting at a cautionary indicator right now for these two divisions. Community Development, we are reflecting. Community Development, we are reflecting a 47% of their fiscal budget has been spent. Positive Police is at 51, so they're right on track with that 51 spend. 911 Communication is at 49% and right on track with that 51% as well. Moving on to Code Enforcement, Fire Services, and Library Expenditures, those are all reflecting positive spend at this point for the midyear, and we expect those will be in budget by the end of the year. Same thing Engineering, 43%. Streets Expenditures, we're showing cautionary 57% of their 51%. There are some midyear budget adjustment requests for the Streets Department for some other contracted services, and that should bring this division into a positive performance indicator by year end. Parks and Recreation is throwing showing 35% spend to their 51%. This is likely due to the closures with the COVID issues that we saw at the beginning of the year and just reduction in services. So we expect to see a reduction in expenditures there. Community Support is showing 48% of the 51%. Buildings is at 42, and non-departmental is at 25% of the 51. So those three divisions are also reflecting a positive performance indicator. Before I move on to the Water Fund, does council have any questions pertaining to the general fund? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move through to the Water Fund. So the Water Fund, we are reflecting a positive for both the expenditures and the revenues. One item I did want to make note for the expenditures is that if we were to include the encumbrances, that would bring the total water spent up to 32% versus that 21. Additionally, the city is looking at evaluating the fund balance for this fund, and we'll come back to council with the analysis on that. Revenues at a fund level exceed expenditures by 900K for the Water Fund.
Devon, is that just operating for the Water Fund? Or does that also include capital?
This does include capital as well. Yep.
So we don't have a breakout for if if we're doing very little in capital and water operating is exceeding?
We so these bars would show us that information. They think that's part of the benefit and the changes that we have discussed, and we can include that in a future report to have that breakout a little further.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving on to the Sewer Fund, revenues are also positive, 43% of revenues collected were at 45%. Sewer has spent 30% of their budget, and historically, we're at 43%. Revenues are exceeding expenditures in this fund by 250,000. And this also includes capital and operating for each of the enterprise funds. And we can do a better job about breaking that out in the future.
And Devon, could you just again, could you advise us of when we actually pay the debt service?
When?
I'm just curious, does that come into this equation as well?
The debt service for sewer, I believe, was paid in the first quarter of this year and?
January.
In January. Yep.
Okay.
We'll do another payment in July, so we'll see that fluctuation here yet again.
And another question on the sewer and water funds. Did you mention, or maybe I didn't hear it well, is there a water and sewer rate study coming up or reassessment of those rates based on the older, I think, 2015 and 2009 studies?
So the these figures are based on the RAFTILIS study, which I believe was completed in a couple of years ago. So that is the current rate study. We are looking at the fund balances for all of our funds and forecasts. So when we're doing that, we are looking at the rate analysis as well with our consultant. I don't believe we're out for a rate study on water or sewer at this point.
Devon, it was completed in 2019.
2019, thank you.
In the autumn of 2019.
Yes. So but that is part of our analysis as we look at each one of the funds is what is the rates telling us? And and does our current situation still agree to what the consultant advised?
It seems like we are accumulating at a very fast pace in these funds.
Yes, and that's part of where we're looking at the fund balances for each one of these funds to outline if there's future capital needs or what the determination of that fund balance is. All right. No other questions, I'll move on to the Airport Fund. The Airport Fund is also at a positive. We would typically expect to have 37% of our revenues. Currently, we're at 52% of collections. The airport in itself is seeing a huge recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, and traffic is increasing there with the two additional carriers there as well. So with that, you will see the revenues and expenditures there.
Just have to comment on her choice of music.
Wow. I'm not saying a word. I'm worried, Devon.
That's okay.
What you were talking about.
That's okay.
Oh, my gosh.
You can use a little music. Yeah. So anyway, my whole point is, as revenues rebound, you'll see those expenditures and revenues in the airport kind of run together as we continue to have that recovery from the pandemic. Airport is ahead by 708,000 revenues to expenditures for month ending June. Sustainable Services, which does include trash, recycle, and sustainability, we are showing a positive on the revenues with the 53% of collections or typically around 44%. We have the expenses listed as cautionary for the expenditures. However, the fund is ahead by 300,000, so we would expect to this for this to be in budget by end of year as well on sustainable services. Moving on to our Transportation Services Fund, I did want to make a note as we look at the revenues. Our Grants Division did do a request for Chrisa, I'm sorry, for CARES and the 5311 Grant, which will be booked back in the amount of 539,000 for first quarter. We are changing our accounting practices as of July 1st to reflect when we do that request, it'll show as an accrual instead of waiting for that actual to hit. So we're not ending up in this cautionary situation with the fund so council has more and citizens have more updated information. So all we have is listed as cautionary, and we do have the expenditures exceeding revenues by 665K in this fund. We do expect all of that funding to put this fund into a positive position by year end. Also wanted to note on the expenditure side that the Mercy Route was added back in in February, so we would expect to see an additional expenditures with that route coming back on.
So Devon, if I'm understanding correctly, two things were not actually in the budget. One is a lodger's tax increase, obviously, because we didn't know whether that was going to pass. And the other one was adding the mercy line back in in an expense because we hadn't made that decision when we did the budget.
Right.
So so when the lodger's tax does start coming in, that will be in excess of budget. Will we be adjusting our midyear budget projections to accommodate the fact that we're expecting a lodger's tax increase in there? So we'll know how we're tracking on that?
Because you did request that in that.
When we did our initial forecasting for the lodger's tax, which we brought to the study session at the last study session, not today's, but the one prior, it was around $63,000 that we would expect for transit to collect this year based on the new lodger's tax with those percentages. But that would only be with the 14%, not the additional 11% that council did ask in the midyear budget adjustment to include drivers and the other operational costs for adding the Mercy Route back in February. So I would expect that once council makes the determination for what to do with the lodger's tax at large from that policy standpoint, there may be an additional request to come back to council to say we'd like to appropriate these ones in the different areas.
So in the midyear reapropriation, though, the 14%, is that included in the in the change that we're going to be discussing later tonight?
The revenue is not, no.
The revenue is not?
No.
Great, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on transit before I move on to the Internal Services?
We just that we do have that lodger's discussion scheduled for the next study session. So when we look at the lodger's tax, that'll help us begin to be able to make some more projections on what the council perceives to be those percentages to be.
Okay. With the Internal Service Funds, because of the way they function in nature, I'm not going to spend too much time on them. We're reflecting positive revenues and expenditures for the General Services Fund. The one I will pause on here is the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. Council is aware that we continue to run a pretty high fund balance in this fund. Part of our issue this year is that we're having a challenge securing vehicles because of the microchip shortages as a result of the pandemic. However, this is part of the analysis that we're doing on this fund to determine what a proper fund balance would be. And with that, we'll look at what each department puts in from a repair and maintenance standpoint. So definitely something we're working on, but did want to call out the fact that we recognize we're putting a lot of revenues in here and don't have the expenses reflecting that as what fit as nice as we'd like to.
And Devon, if I understand it correctly, we collect all of those revenues at the beginning of the year rather than on a monthly basis?
We actually switched that to monthly.
We switched it to monthly. So on that email that I sent through was yearly, it's switched to monthly. One of the things that we probably or that I will be tasking the staff to look at specifically with this surf fund and our fund balance excess is for the council to possibly consider beginning the creation of that depreciation fund that we were talking about specifically with the facilities so that we would have a fund that began to develop. So as we needed to do repairs to buildings, it was something that we already had kind of programmed in with our annual budget to be able to do those upgrades or fixtures with any type of asset that we have that needs continuous maintenance. So that's one option. That's not the entire option. We have an analysis that we'll be doing and bringing more to discussion as we go through our 2022 budget process.
So that's really good to hear. I would want to just make certain the city manager knows that one of my questions would be, you know, those funds are paid in by a certain pro-rata determination of, you know, the police use X number for cars, Parks and Rec does that. And so if we then did transfer it to some kind of facility use, how are we assuring that the appropriate funds have come from various sources?
It would be very similar to our cost allocation portion as we looked at each one of those, what would be the appropriate source for their buildings in those departments and making sure that it would be going through. So all would be based on a formula of the years of use in their their building, what maintenance is already overdue. But we would have to come up with a formula that makes sense and that is right.
Understood, thank you.
Again, risk management and self-insurance are both in a positive position as internal service funds. We do carry right now about a 550, $3,000 revenue to expense in the self-insurance, and that's just the nature of the fund. The claims can be a little bit more difficult to predict. So any questions on general or on the Internal Service Funds before I jump to the special revenues? Okay, all right. So starting off with the 2005 debt service, this fund follows the same trend lines as the sales tax. And so once again, we are at that 11% ahead. This on the expenditure side, this covers the debt service payments for Florida Road and the library. We currently are transferring in from the Road Impact Fee Fund to offset the expenditures related to these debt service payments. Right now, we are 18,000 down revenues to expenditures, and so this is a fund that we continue to monitor pretty closely to make sure we're able to make those payments. Any questions on this part of the 05 before I move on to the other quarter cent of this 05? Okay. So looking at the open space parks and trails, this fund is dedicated to parks and trails projects. Again, we're at that 11% ahead because these all follow the same breakout, just different percentages that each fund receives. If you do look at the revenues versus expenditures, we're showing that expenditures are exceeding revenues by that about 784,000. This fund does have a fund balance to cover that, and that is part of the the budget process. Some projects that currently exist in the expenditures for this particular special revenue include post-maintenance, the Smart 160, the park trail improvements, Mason Center removal, and the Durango Mesa Park. So any questions on that quarter cent before I jump to the 15?
Can you explain a little bit what what is entailed in that number, those two numbers? Because the the peak in in June there, just run through that.
So this big dark blue number here, that's the actual capital expenditures. This fund does also allow for a operating cost to be transferred into the general fund to cover parks maintenance. And so that's what this light blue identifier is here. And since all of these are cumulative, there is a big uptick in June in the projects movement for these. While we're talking about this, we will be putting forward a court getting back on track with our CIP reports for council as well, so you can see on a project basis where each one of these projects stands.
Devon, that big uptick was the Durango Mesa, correct? The purchase of the land? Yeah, I wanted to just clarify that that was a $1.5 million expenditure?
Yeah.
And it's marked as positive, but I won't see the percentages. So how does that work on this specific one for the open space and trails, parks and trails?
And that's a good question. So for a lot of these special revenue and a lot of the capital funds, it's more difficult to say on a percentage basis year over year what we expect to spend because they're project specific in nature. So we're not looking at them from a percentage basis about whether we're on track or not. We're looking at more from a revenue to expenditures and from the budget standpoint about where we stand as to whether or not these are positive. Because the projects vary year over year, it wouldn't be beneficial for us to do a look back and have the percentages for these ones.
So this positive basically means that the expenses were better than budgeted or forecasted. Is that correct?
And maybe a better way to state it on these funds would to say that they're on track. It's positive because we're not overbudgeted on any of the projects specifically in these funds, and so we could probably do a better job about explaining what we mean by positive. And like I said, maybe on track is a better indicator for these funds.
No, it's perfectly fine. I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So looking at the 2015, these are used for parks and multimodal projects. Again, the sales and use tax is positive with that 11% ahead. Couple of projects that are underway in this fund is Rotary Park Restrooms, Lake Night Horse, the Community Forest Plan, 32nd Street Crossing, and the Animus Rehab, as we talked about earlier, that will be moving here this fall. So this fund, we're at 1.9 revenues to expenditures. And I would still say it's positive because we're not obviously exceeding any of the budget for on a project basis. And so while we're, we don't have as many projects in movement as we did on the previous fund, it still is in a positive standpoint. Any questions on the 15? Okay. Moving on to the 2019, so this is for our streets taxes. Same situation here, sales and use tax follow the same trend lines. Couple of projects we have in here are the street overlays, the street reconstruction, and the seal coating. We are at 1.5 million in expenditures for this particular revenues to expense on the positive side. Any questions on the 19?
Yeah. If you added in encumbrances, would that expenses be closer to the revenue for the 2019?
I can certainly. I can certainly get back to you on that one. That's, I think, one of the iterations that we'd like to start including in these reports is what are the encumbrances, especially on the CIP side of things?
Yeah, I just hear from the community, they want to see those streets and alleys repaired.
Yeah, absolutely. That would at least give the indication that we're under contract and moving. So. And then our final fund that we're looking at here is the Durango Tourism Fund. We do have this sitting at a cautionary standpoint. Lodger's taxes rebounding with the increase in traffic that we're seeing with tourism. But because we had such a hard impact on this fund in 2020, we're still recovering and trying to make back some of those expenditures. But we do have that increase from the 2.0 to the 5.25 in the rates. We would expect to have this fund in a positive position by year end. So any questions on the quarterly report?
Thank you, Devin. This is great, and I'm so glad. It is a work in progress, so I know that there will be changes and all will be improved even more. And I do record the quarterly CIP conversations so that all the projects are what we're expecting. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
All righty then. So we will move on to 12.2, discussion and possible action concerning approval of the 2021 mid-year budget. I think that would be Jose.
It's going to be Devin, our budget and strategic planning manager. So right back on.
Excellent. Well, thank you and good evening again. Glad we get the opportunity to spend time together. So I'm going to now pull up our presentation for the mid-year budget conversation. For some reason, I'm not seeing it. Let's see. I apologize.
Maybe they show all windows.
Oh, thank you. Excellent. Okay. So the purpose in the request for this particular item is to bring to council a mid-year budget adjustment. If council recalls, when we prepared the 2021 budget, we did it in a very conservative manner, not knowing where the COVID pandemic would take us in our revenues. So accordingly, departments prepared a very conservative expense budget. And with that, we also advise council that if revenues were doing well compared to expenditures, that we would come back and discuss a cost of living adjustment if revenues could accommodate. So what we're going to discuss tonight is those requests, and there is additional details that are found in the resolution for this particular item. So the strategic plan alignment, this particular item aligns with financial excellence and transparency as part of the strategic plan. Give it a minute. I know that's not a white screen. It should look like this. I don't know if I should stop sharing, come back into it.
Have a shot. See if it shows up on just the window without sharing. It's efficient, Heather.
I'm going to reopen it.
You may just need to close some of the open windows out. It may be with that video and all of that PowerPoints, maybe taking up some of the...
Bandwidth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, close?
So usually we could use your music.
Distraction, distraction.
Very entertaining. I wish I could plug in my iPad.
Close.
Have it up.
Powerful computer.
That's not...
Ctrl, delete.
Try this, and I'll just reopen it. It's right here.
Just kidding.
There you go.
Molly.
You were. Jose, you was on Omarias for a while.
Two-time former CIO.
There you go. All right.
Jay-Z.
Jay-Z.
Pardon me.
Too many windows.
Oh, here we go. Okay.
Sorry. No, you're good. Thank you for the pause there. So as we just talked about in the quarterly mid-year, I won't belabor this conversation too much, but revenues are up, and so this is why we're bringing back to council the request for the mid-year appropriations. So I'm not going to cover that in more detail than we just did. So for the cost of living adjustment, what we as staff put together as a recommendation to council is that we have a minimum of 1,500. And so an employee would receive no less than 1,500 for the COLA adjustment in order to kind of spread that internal equity across the staffing. And if otherwise, they would receive a 3% if they were to exceed that 1,500 and a maximum of 3,000. So once again, that cap is set to try and offset offering the expenditures to some of the lower grossing staff members. If council recalls, we did have that furlough as part of the COVID reductions. And so this is an effort to try and provide staffing with that cost of living adjustment since our revenues are allowing us to do so. So the amount of the mid-year COLA for the general fund is 450,809. For the water fund, it's 34,386. Sewer fund is 33,767. Airport fund, 38,459. Sustainable Services Fund is 18,384. And Transportation Services Fund is 41,038. In the internal service funds, general services, we'd be looking at a 3,374. In the surf fund, it would be 16,199. And risk management would be 2,413 for a total of 638,828. I'd like to take a moment, if I can, to offer any questions or answer any questions.
I could just add a couple more things onto that.
Absolutely.
This is only for employees who were employed as of January 1. So if we would have done a COLA with the 2021 budget in which we were in, you would, they would have been employed as of January 1. So if they were not employed as of January 1 or later in the year, they would not be eligible for the cost of living adjustment, and we will look at 2022 to see how our revenues are. And then just secondly, I am not in this cost of living adjustment. I want to make sure that I point that out because it just, I have not been here a year and it didn't feel right, me being over the organization to do so. That's, I think, a part for the council to do when their, my annual review comes up to decide what they believe is fair. So just wanted to point those two things out.
So this is retroactive then to January 1?
To January, to the first full pay period in January.
So I have a question for the city manager. You know, when the council enacted this comprehensive adjustment in the pay scale, I know you and I had conversations about compression issues that this act created. So how do you see this helping with some of the compression issues that you might still have?
The compression issues, this isn't going to really provide any support on the compression side. This is just really a cost of living adjustment to the employees. We are looking right now currently with HR, working on a plan to assess and address the compression issues. We do understand that that is an issue that happened, I believe that was in January of 2019, when that pay plan was approved, and we are looking to...
2020.
2020? Okay, January 2020. And we are definitely looking to do what we can to provide a way that we could be able to correct that, whether that is through the budget process in 2022 or if there's possibility that we may need to stage it out over a few years. But we are looking into that and should have at least some sort of, we should have a number of what that would be here in the next, hoping by September.
Thank you.
And Mayor Portem Noseworthy and Jose, can you elaborate a little bit on that topic? As a new council member, I'm not fully familiar with this issue.
Sure. So back in 2019, there was a study done in the summer of 2019 that reviewed the pay plan for the city. And recommendations were made by that, by the consultant in the study that were presented by staff. And council, in a non-unanimous vote, voted to apply the wage study to the earnings of the employees. And so it's as a result of this study and then what was implemented, apparently there are compression issues which have to do, I'll let Jose or Devin explain those better, but it has to do with some pay inequity, create some pay inequities in the system.
So when the pay plan was approved back in January 2020, when the funding for some of whatever was approved at that time, what ended up happening is everyone was moved up into a different pay grade, but those who had seniority weren't given any compensation to move them farther in the pay grade. So what's ending up happening is we're having people who've been in a, for example, I'll use police, who've been a sergeant for 10 years, only making like 92 cents an hour more than somebody who just became a sergeant because they weren't progressed up through that pay plan where they should have been.
Well, interesting. I'm not sure, I have some other question on the COLA, but you guys go ahead first. Explain something. Or shall I?
I'm sorry, Olivier, we don't know what you're asking for. You might need to speak more clearly.
My, I had another couple of questions, but I didn't want to interrupt Mayor Portem Noseworthy unless she was done.
I'm good. I only had a question on whether he thought this was going to be at all helpful, and that's answered that no, we have to deal with that in a different timeframe.
Okay. Now, the COLA is, so you said it's retroactive to January, and then you say it's for the first full paycheck. So is this amount going to be for the full year or as a one-time payment and then continue? How does that work?
The COLA is retroactive to the first full pay period in January. That's how it would have been done when they would have come on. So we do our pay periods, and I need to look at payroll to find out exactly when our payroll began for what would have been the budget year for 2021. So it's the full pay period of January, and this amount does reflect the total cost annually.
Okay. So the $638,000 will be for the full year this year with those numbers, 1,503% a maximum, and it will continue if this proceeds and continue to eternity, yeah?
Yes, this would be an increase into each employee's salary.
And was there, or is there, or will there be an inflation adjustment for salaries?
That's usually what the cost of living adjustment is. COLA is the cost of living adjustment is to try to help with inflation.
Okay, so this would be the only increase. And since it was only two years ago that that compression issue came up, and I think, is there any benchmarking or studies that compare our city staff salaries to comparable cities and employees and functions? How do we rank in that sense?
So that's still, that's going to be part of the compression study that we're looking at, understanding that there was funding spent in 2019 and then improved in 2020 for a market full-blown study. We didn't want to necessarily repeat it, but part of that compression study will be to take a look at the market and compare not only salaries, but also look at benefits and try to put it together as best we can as a good total compensation comparison between our different markets that we do compete against. That can be a little bit more complicated at times, and we're not trying to make this the most complicated side to do so in studies, but definitely trying to see what we can do to kind of correct it and get us going back to alleviate that compression.
Yeah, I think I'm very pleased with staff and how they perform, and I think it cost of living adjustment necessary is definitely warranted. It's just hard to see how we compare, and that would be the only difficulty, I guess, because we are talking about 638,000 in, you know, for eternity at a minimum. And, you know, at the city council, you have to do, have some oversight and share some financial responsibility. But those were my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Olivier.
And I think it should also be noted that I asked Jose, city council will not be getting a COLA.
Yes, any type of a cost of, or any type of salary adjustment or wage adjustment has to be done by ordinance, and if it is approved, it doesn't go into effect until the next election, I believe. Is Dirk got that correct?
I also think that if there's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's a counselor that in the next election would still be on, they also would not receive that pay rate. So they can't grant themselves a pay rate.
You can't vote yourself, right?
Okay, thank you.
And one more interesting thought here with the compression that you're discussing issue. It's interesting that you, that we are suggesting a max of 3,000 for the high wager and earners, thus continuing that compression possibly?
Not necessarily, because compression would be more with your peer within, in the same pay grade. So when you look at compression, it's like positions. So I've been a planner for 10 years and somebody who's been a planner here for one year, and we're making almost the same amount of money because I have not been progressed through the pay plan. From what I've been told, as the pay plan was, or that market was done in, back in January 2020, that it wasn't fully allocated, the full funding to make that compression go away. So this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the compression side or on the maximum side. What usually happens on that portion is just because when you look at a percentage increase, the equity of it can be a little bit difficult, whereas if we did a 3% flat fee, 3% flat increase on somebody who's making $30,000 a year is going to be much different than a 3% increase on somebody making $100,000. So the reason we did that max and that sliding scale was so that we could try to make it as equitable as possible when we look at just this flat percentage increase on the cost of living adjustment.
Shall we move on?
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. So moving on from the cost of living adjustment, which is part of this mid-year request, we did receive our first tranche of the American Rescue Plan Funds. And so this request would be to have a new housing division. The housing division would include a program manager to accelerate some of that implementation of the housing plan. They would also pursue other housing-related efforts. This division would be within community development to create some synergies among the URA, the Creative Economy Commission, and other business development efforts. This division would be responsible for creating and implementing community housing initiatives with the goal of maintaining, enhancing the quality of life in Durango. And so this division would also work very collaboratively with community partners to seek out new partnerships with local and state and federal levels. And so this would be grant-funded based on the American Rescue Plan funding. I'm going to take a second and pause since we do have Kevin and Scott here. Did I miss anything? Was there anything y'all would like to add? Okay. So the only other item is on the contracted services. You'll see here that we're requesting the 60,000 until we do an RFP process that could increase, but we would bring that back to council when, maybe when we look to appropriate some of those other funds for economic development opportunities that council has previously discussed. So any questions related to the housing division and what we're asking for with these funds?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Not sure, does any other councillor want to go first or?
Go ahead, Olivier.
This is a bit of a long one for me, but I reviewed the, so first is on the RFP funding. So I reviewed the prior meeting that formed the basis for the discussion and the initial study session, April 13. The ARP funds used that were discussed was transit, infrastructure, connectivity, fire mitigation, home scan, translation services, workforce housing, Durango Mesa... The ARP funds used and that were discussed was transit, infrastructure, connectivity, fire mitigation, home scan, translation services, workforce housing, Durango Mesa Park and a possibility for a housing director position. And then on May 25th, it was not, and I actually just reviewed those documents from those meetings. Those uses that were discussed then included offsetting loss of revenue, primarily library rec center premium pay. I'll just run through this list, but this is not that relevant. Public health measure, communication, mental health, transformational programs. And I think 1 million was deployed in the business community. Now, a housing manager was only a possibility for the RFP funds. This is purely on the RFP funding side. And even if it would be, it's still an expense. Well, those funds are, could be used elsewhere under ARP. And since the ARP money is a one-time event, this position is not a one-time event, it's a long-term position, I assume. So it is not a one-time, it's a continuous, probably 150,000 annually expense. That is, I'm going to rip, split it up a little bit in three different points here on this housing part. So the first one is why is it ARP funds? Because that was not really agreed upon, it was just an option, a potential option. The second point I have is that a housing manager is obviously was, is part of the strategic plan. And I'm trying to understand what exactly the role and task will be for such a housing manager. Now, it's a, it's a complex issue and the affordable housing and housing in general. But the items we can do as a city are limited. And that part is actually not that complex. There's only so many physical things you can do, which is the land use and development code, which is already being done, as we heard earlier. It is working better with developers and builders, which is also in progress. It includes building infrastructure, La Posta Road, which I assume would fall under the public works engineer. It may include incentivizing project developers and making city-owned land available, for example, and it may include some regulatory and tax options. And as some councils seem to be in favor of, it may include the city buying properties such as hotels that can be converted into affordable housing or buying land and then the city building and becoming landlord. But the range of these items we can do as a city, it would be beneficial to get a better understanding of what exactly a housing manager would be tasked with. And it seems that we already have many meetings and many studies and I would hate to see another layer being built in with more of that, along with more strategy and program language. And I think we need to address housing with concrete action and make more progress with actual projects. And those are the ones that I just mentioned before. And then lastly, on the same topic, when we had a housing retreat, we discussed a two-pronged, two-pronged approach. One being housing data, which was turned into a bare bones document, but it was received and I think it's a very beneficial document. And the second one was the funding mechanisms and that was to be provided in the future and is still pending. So we didn't even get to the actual housing manager just yet. And as you mentioned, there is even a consulting service fee, including real estate and pre-development services for $60,000, which is another item that was not really discussed at the council before. So to proceed with this funding seems to me to put the car in front of the horse a little bit. And I'm not sure if I'm the only one who believes, who feels that way, or if you guys have similar thoughts about that.
So Olivier, I personally, as one counselor, have a response to that and I think it's a lot simpler than, than it may appear, which is that all those things you mentioned, absolutely. Those are things that we need to have conversations about and figure out what our priorities are and how we do them. However, we do not, this is, that's a new division department, I don't know what word to use, within the city that we've never done before. We've never focused on housing in this way before. And I think that that's where Jose has come forward and staff has come forward with a very efficient, I think dollar amount efficient way of being able to develop a scenario where we can have those conversations about that and we can know what's a good effective way to go forth. Someone on staff will have to do this work. And if the people on staff right now already have full-time jobs and they're working on other focuses that the city has requested them to do, if they take time away from that to focus on this housing program, then we lose what they're doing now. And so essentially, council has agreed, I believe, and it's in our strategic plan, that workforce housing and other forms of housing are a priority for us. And so really, in order to address this, I believe that we do need another staffing person to handle that workload. And then they will develop what they will bring to us for us to talk about. So that's one item that I would address. And the second one you mentioned was, please remind me, no, the last, the last one you mentioned, please remind me again?
So the, why it would be funded by ARP because that was not really discussed?
Oh, no, it was the two-pronged approach. So the two-pronged approach was talking about the data and the funding for housing and other, and housing-related programs. And I can't remember the date or if we've actually said it yet, but we will be having a housing working day in August or September?
Somewhere, and there would be getting some dates on that, yes.
Right. At which time that two-pronged approach will then actually be discussed by all of council and will have all that conversation happening then.
If, I may just provide really quick just some context because I want to make sure that I, I addressed some of those issues. I think on the second study session, we did specifically, and I did say that this is what I was hearing, was to create a housing division and some economic development opportunity funds to set aside. And the direction from the council was that I was hearing them correctly and that's why I'm bringing this up. In that, we do realize this is American Rescue Plan funds and I did specifically address that this is an opportunity for us to see what this return on the investment is. And if after the funds run out, if this is something that doesn't work, then we have to downsize this program, we have to downsize this project. It's just, it's a short-term, staff understands, it's a limited amount of funds. However, if we become in, you know, become very successful in it, then I think that's a decision for us to sit down and talk about and decide if that's something that we want to continue to fund on our own. So I do believe, Counselor Bosman, that both of those were addressed in that study session.
And I would just jump, Olivier, to answer a bit, is that, yeah, I recognize that we will eventually have to put this into the budget from our regular revenue stream, but this is an opportunity to jumpstart it. And we all recognize the housing crisis we're in and this is an opportunity, in my view, to have someone who wakes up every day thinking about how am I going to address rental property, attainable rental property, attainable homes in this community? How am I going to work with developers? How am I going to bring in new developers to help us build the kind of housing we need in this community that we're all hearing from our constituents that is missing right now?
Jessica or Melissa, do you have a comment or that you'd like to make?
Um, no, I, I support, I think we've had this discussion. I recall having it in public and I supported it. I did have just further questions. My question was, I think Olivier might have more questions. I was, I wanted some more detail on the housing consultant services and what, how we think we might use those.
We, we put a placeholder there when we look at it because we do realize there's going to be, you know, probably some intuitive financing and real estate knowledge that we would need, somebody that could also help that housing manager when we have projects to work with developers. So it really is a place number for us to get started. It's nothing that we've done with an RFP yet or anything in regards to that. As we looked at it and the challenge to staff was, okay, to get this started in a way that we think we can make some improvement, what do we think we need? We've kind of talked about it and discussed it and this was kind of my, after meeting with them, my recommendation of, I think this is a good start for us to get this moving.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next slide, please?
I want to circle back one more time, everybody's finished on this housing topic.
I'm sorry, Olivier, we can't hear you, you might have to speak up.
I, I wanted to circle back one more time on this housing topic, if every counselor has had an opportunity to voice their questions and concerns.
Sure.
Yeah? I, what, what is difficult for me to understand is that during a retreat, we come up with an approach and somehow we make a strong deviation from this, even though we might have ended up in the same position if we moved it faster. But it is just more difficult for me to support something if, if these things do not follow a logical sequence where everybody has that discussion. And I guess it's just me that feels that way, but I, I just wonder who drives these, the housing consulting topic and the housing manager? Is that something that, Jose, you came up by yourself or how, how does that work?
Olivier, I, I think that Jose answered that question and I believe the rest of council, I think you feel the same way.
Yes, I think that there's, this was two different conversations. So one was the ARP funds that we agreed to utilize for the La Posta infrastructure and then the housing manager. That was one conversation in a study session and then the separate conversation was in our retreat and that was for our, like, council housing kind of approach. And so I think that this is the ARP funds, which I fully supported in the study session and.
And I think you're correct, Jose, or, I'm sorry. I think you're correct, Olivier. I think the rest of council does agree that we're following the path that we agreed to do. And so maybe there is a misunderstanding there for you, but I think the rest of us are in alignment. So I think we should move on to the next topic.
Okay. So looking at the mid-year requests by division, I won't spend too much time. We thought it was important to reflect for council what's a one-time request versus an ongoing. So one-time means it'll be included one time and then it will not carry on to future budgets. So wanted to make that note and so you can see with each division what those items are and where those requests lie between one-time and ongoing. So in the general fund, our total mid-year request is 1.2 million with 625,617 being a one-time and 627,498 being a ongoing. To explain a little bit, one of the, the one-time items are more contractual or operating in nature and the ongoing are more personnel-related, related to the COLA or other items that exist within there. Again, in the agenda documentation, we did outline by division what those requests are. So any questions before I move from the general fund into the other funds?
Will you be taking the 2015 separately?
The 20, I'm sorry, the?
Will you take the 2015 directed sales tax separately from, obviously from the general fund, will you be covering that?
The 2015 request?
Sales tax request?
Oh, that one is separate of the general fund.
Thank you, I'll raise that, I'll raise that later.
Any other questions on the general fund? Just wanted to provide it in a little bit different. So by category, so we have what's existing contracted services, a debt payoff, a materials and equipment, personnel, so that's just personnel, and then personnel COLA, professional development, software, and then back to that total number to break it down in a category for the council's use. And as far as that debt service, I did want to note what that particular item was, since it is a little bit different. That's that Silver Peak condo, if we were to pay that off now, it would save 13K in interest. That one's kind of odd in nature compared to the rest of them, I did want to highlight that.
Devin, if I'm page 141, which is the planning community development section, is that included in the question? So I have one question there, which was, it says Main Avenue Planning Process, $50,000 one time, start the planning and design phase of the Main Avenue project to look for a permanent solution to bump outs? I, I thought it was more than just bump outs. I thought it was like a bigger picture of what Main Street could look like.
Let Kevin address that one.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counselors Kevin Hall, managing. You're correct. Maybe the verbiage there isn't as accurate as you would like, but really the idea here is first phase is to talk to the community, the business community bid and really talk about what downtown could look like in the future, what the alternatives might be and then kind of try to hone in on what that preferred alternative is. That isn't engineering services necessarily, that's more almost public process, landscape architecture, it's visioning. Will the number be $50,000? We don't know that. But that would give us adequate funding to bring in a firm like we've done in the past through this type of vision and make sure we get it right. You know, we did this back in 2006 to do a revisioning of Main and I think it really focused in on the engineering right out of the gates and it didn't go well. So I think, given what we've learned in the last two years, the idea of really engaging community on Main and the larger community about what they want to see on downtown. And it's not just about bump outs, it's really about the long-term vision. And, you know, if there is an outcome that everyone's agreement to and the council likes, then it really becomes a capital project at some point in the future.
That's great, so maybe the verbiage change on this description, great, that's awesome.
And while Kevin's there, could you just clarify on the 1,500 translation services? You have that as a one-time, but I was thinking that maybe you will use it and figure out how it works, but eventually it would be an ongoing budget item?
Yes, it would be, so this is mid-year, so that would, really the idea is that's for balance of this year and, you know, working with the team will identify what the numbers look like moving forward for 2022 and beyond.
Any other questions related to the general fund mid-year requests? Um, hearing none, we'll jump into the internal services. So we have the general services, which is personnel COLA, 3,00374. We have the SURF fund, which is at 16,199. We have the self-insurance fund, which is a contracted services item to look at our current broker, so that would be switching from brokers and that's 26,750. And then in risk management, we have the COLA for the 2,413. Any questions related to the internal service funds? Okay.
End again.
It's old music time, Melissa.
Did they cut it off or not?
It's too late to put a COLA in for the new computer here.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'm going to slowly change pages. There we go. Okay, let me go ahead and reshare the folks that we have there.
While you're saying that, I just wanted to make a comment, Mayor Proten Baxter, sorry, that used to be my title. Mayor Proten Noseworthy pointed out that Kevin Hall had passed out a 2021 mid-year appropriations division form for the housing division and Counselor Bosman's, it's two pages, which he also emailed to us before the meeting. So I think that this might answer a lot of your questions about the housing, if you want to take a look at it and be more informed on what we're talking about. I realize you may not have seen that email, but it is, it was sent out to council before the meeting.
And would it be possible to also include this in the agenda packet so the public has this information?
Great. Okay, Devin.
I just wanted to say that I did receive that package and I scanned through it just now and it, my concern just remains the same, it's not in concrete, it's a lot more meetings and everything, but I appreciate you reminding me of that email, thank you.
Okay. So airport fund, we're looking at, we're requesting a personnel COLA in the amount of 38,459, sustainable services, again at 18,384. For the water and sewer funds, I'm going to talk about these together since in a lot of cases they're split. It's a personnel request that's a one-time, or it's, I'm sorry, it's not a one-time, but it is a personnel request that is asking for the public works director's salary to be split out of the general fund at that percentage rate, at a 20% versus that being in the general fund, which was where the engineering, or the engineer was historically. So that- And then in the transportation services fund, there's quite a few items there that are specifically related to the Mercy housing route as well as the changes from the transportation director salaries and the assistant director.
To that point, I added all the Mercy related ones and it came to 150,550. So it sounds like essentially that's what it's costing us this year and what we're estimating it'll cost us for the rest of the year to run the Mercy route. Is that okay? Great.
And Devin, also, I think just for the, to be aware, because we've talked about this, I know Cynthia's working on the cost allocation that we pay from these enterprise funds back to the general fund to a more rational explanation for that and that should be forthcoming in the next budget year. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep, absolutely. And then the other item that's kind of a bigger ticket there is the single-oddic cost related since we had three major programs that existed in the transit fund. That's part of that cost allocation is trying to direct costs on an actual basis instead of in a cost allocation format. So that's one of the first efforts to try and move that direction and since we had those major programs, it's allocating that to transit.
And could I just clarify to the mayor's point on the transit expenses that are specific to the Three Springs route? Does that qualify for CARES funding or any other funding so that we're not offsetting it with our increased revenue?
I believe we should have Sarah Hill in the wings. I don't know if Tom can pull her hand and answer that question.
No, you don't have to answer it. You don't have to answer it tonight, but I would hope that we would have some CARES funding opportunity and use that rather than our.
We do have CARES funding coming forth and I believe CARES is going to be coming with a $150,000 appropriation request for CARES funding.
There's CARES funding. There's some other funding that's coming around that we're trying to solidify that will help so help with possibly some more routes. So there's a lot of, there's funding out there and we're just trying to make sure that we're placing it in the right spots.
That was the question I wanted to follow up on is potential funding for more routes. I was curious, I know Mercy is the top route to get reinstated back. Difficult not to have transportation out there, but after our CRC meeting today, I was curious about the 160 route and how we prioritize those as well as we know Crestview is a very important route too.
Sarah has a plan. Sarah has a plan. It was one of the great things when we talked about 100-day plan, when I was kind of talking about the promotion and she has a plan to do so. It's going to rely on funding that she can, she can get. We do understand where we're at on the transportation sustainability portion of the funding. We do realize that if we use federal funding, that might be a limited source for a few years and we'd have to come up with something else. So we're, we're working that and all is on the, on the radar and Sarah's going to be probably presenting a more detailed action of specifically of how those steps could work.
Thank you. That'd be great.
And I would just add that Councilor Yusuf raised a really good point in the CRC meeting, which was that there may be some routes right now where we're not actually having the ridership that a route like the 160 that was eliminated might have immediate demand for. So not only how to reinstate those, but a consideration of who's using the services and who could use it more.
Absolutely.
Onward hope.
Excellent. Okay. And I do want to, we can pause here prior to us moving on. I think Mayor Protem Nosworthy had some questions about the 2015 and I don't have a section in here of the presentation, so.
I have two, just for us to think about when we consider this. And one is I, while we are still in negotiations and those are confidential that handle, that are handled in an executive section, you know, we are looking to eventually own Buckley Park and I remind us all that we have no bathroom facilities at Buckley Park, only outdoor porta-potties and that particularly if you, they're not there anymore. So we have no facilities there, particularly if you are mobility impaired, your nearest bathroom would be now, it would be Rotary Park, but otherwise you're looking at the visitor's. So as we think about expenses for this year, I think that we need probably if we follow Rotary Park, a $600,000 investment in bathrooms. Not sexy, but necessary. So I think we need to keep that in mind, possibly even as part of this mid-year. And then the second thing I was really brought, brought to mind, the whole discussion of equity of our investment, particularly with our 2015. For example, we have, you know, the folks that wanted the okay, but we could garden to continue and I'm not making the statement for or against, but you have that constituency base, you have a Three Springs constituency base that wants to make certain they have Parks and Rec dollars spent there as well as an ADA community, business, Latinx community that all want to make certain that those dollars are equitably spent. And one of the things I would like to suggest to do sooner rather than later is an equity analysis of our Parks and Rec investments. How have they been distributed and where are we lacking, whether it's in the quality of the park maintenance? Are they, are they distributed equitably along income lines, along ethnicity, concentration of communities? Age grouping? And then I'd also like to add along that line that there is a community garden on the south side of town and I don't know if that's had any investments from Parks and Rec as well. And so I just wanted to be informed as we consider making these kind of decisions. And I'm assuming that's a smaller study, a financial cost for study, but could help us as we think about our budget.
And one of the items, just to address that a little bit, that's part of the strategic plan that we're looking to do is to take the census data, use a tool that we already have, which is ESRI, however you want to say it, and lay that against our capital projects and where we are putting in parks so that we're taking the census data and it's being laid against those and that is part of the strategic plan. So as we roll out what our quarterly CIP report looks like and what that looks like for the public, we will have those locations as far as where those projects are placed and then eventually we'll work to get some of that census data out laid out there so we can show what projects fall within and what populations are being served with the census data. So that is part of the strategic plan. It's probably going to take us a little bit longer to get that portion of it, but we do anticipate having that part of the 2022 budget at least where the capital projects are and what that looks like. So.
Great information. Yeah.
Thank you. But I did want us just to keep restrooms in Buckley in mind.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else before I talk about budget next steps and then ask or restate what the recommendation is? Okay. So just wanted to provide council a quick budget next step. So in September, we'll be talking CIP study sessions. So that will be bringing all the CIP projects to council prior to the proposed as well as the potential to have conversations around the community support and what that funding looks like. In October, we have a city manager's budget as well as the budget retreat. We look to finalize the budget after council has seen that and we'll do the budget reconciliation between November and December 1st and then we'll look to adopt the budget and those two appropriations to separate operating and capital by December 15th as well as the county mill levy. So on our agenda document, it is the recommendation of the city manager that council by motion approve the resolution authorizing additional appropriations as part of the mid-year. So I will leave it at that.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move to approve the attached resolution authorizing an additional appropriation. Second.
Any further discussion?
One quick thought to follow up. Mayor Protem Nosworthy, I was just thinking on the Buckley Park bathrooms, because I was going to ask Olivier if he would bring that to Parks and Rec for discussion. We will likely need to.
I think we can decide, I think we can decide, but we, I think we can make, we can be proactive in recognizing that we're proceeding with this and that as we think about how we spend money in 2021, that we might be looking at an appropriation to take care of that.
To both of your points, with the anticipation of this, yes, I think great, that'd be great. Councilor Bosman, if you would at least let Parks and Rec Advisory Board know that this is a possibility here and pray to God.
Urgent need.
Well, is it? Well.
Once it's in our hands.
Well, it might be an upcoming question because they can talk about it before, at least to be aware of it.
Yeah, and maybe they would allow, but anyway, to bring it up.
They may not even know that we're doing this.
Right. That's what I was, discussions to start there.
I will certainly mention it and the Florida Park also needs a restroom facility. So because the former welcome center was the nearest by. I just wanted to discuss or share my comments on the motion that has passed. Even though I agree with most of what is listed in the mid-year budget adjustment, I will not vote in favor because it's presented as a one-time expense funded by ARP, even though it's my understanding will never need, that we never agreed upon, ARP funds for this, as well as the fact that the housing manager position is not a one-time expense, but an ongoing expense. We had discussed and agreed upon another approach for affordable and workforce housing during prior meetings and the housing manager and division along with external services was not discussed nor agreed upon. And I am concerned that these tasks that I just received by email during the meeting will lead to more meetings, strategy discussions, programs, and I really would like to see progress on actual projects and improvements at housing in the near future. So that was my little comment.
Any other discussion? Okay. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Ryu?
Yes.
Councilor Bosman?
No.
Councilor Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to city update 12.4.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have one update that I'd like to present and ask Chief Brammer to come up here and just give a quick quarterly update on our awesome partnership that we have with Axis and our core team and some of the successes we've been able to see so far with that partnership.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So thank you for the opportunity to fund this quarter. It was very generous, it was very thoughtful and it had a lot of foresight that went along with it. It's been a great success so far. We started in January, we had to invent the program essentially and build it ground up. You know, there's models across the country and even somewhat in the state. But it took us about a month to build it and we had to train the clinician and we had one team fielded by about March or so. That team up until about June, fielded themselves individually, about 114 calls successfully on their own and they've assisted the patrol division with about another 250 calls. We have a second team up and running currently, right now. They started in June, now through their training phase and they're actually fielded at this point. So they just started about two weeks ago, so they're out there. So we filled that, increased that call volume as well to assist that need and get those mental health professionals out to the field in a safe environment in order to do positive interactions with our. Couple stumbling blocks that we had early on was we didn't get the DOLA funding for the vehicle, which was unfortunate, but we've overcome that. We've been able to get a hybrid electric vehicle. Might be the first one in the city, I'm not sure. But we did get that and right now it's being outfitted. There was some other financial shortcomings that we had with that, but we've had a couple different partnerships. Axis is donating some money for some equipment. We did the vehicle purchase on our own through some creative financing. And with some salary savings from earlier.
Salary savings. Can we say that? Creative financing. Salary savings.
Fiscally responsible financing.
Exactly. We expended the money and then we've also had a couple of other community partners step up. So the High Need Rotary Club has donated some money as well to assist us with this and Summit Church, who runs the Methodist thrift store, is their parent. They're also in the process of donating some money as well to get us the needed equipment that we can to get all the emergency lighting and radios and computers and such. I look forward to the remainder of the year to see how it continues to progress, but as of right now, it's been a great success.
It sounds like it's spreading in the sense of you're bringing in partners to help work with it. It's not just one or two groups of people.
Absolutely. And that was the biggest thing, you know, we're continuing to work towards what we've done well with man and strategic plan is, you know, we're hopefully continue to build these community partnerships out there because there's a lot of things that the police have traditionally taken on as roles and responsibilities that aren't necessarily ours, but we want to help out and that's why we've been generous to do that. But with the realignment of responsibilities across this country right now, we're finding those other partnerships and people are actually willing to step up to it. So it's been a great partnership so far with these groups.
Questions or comments?
No, I appreciate getting the update and actually I shared with council, I got a call from the paper about that and I said it was, you know, seemingly very impressive with the number of statistics. I think it would be really helpful to hear from Axis about how their clients see it. And it's one thing for us to say this and we're hearing it, but I think it would, that would be my one request is to maybe have Axis tell us of how it's impacted their caseworkers and also, but more importantly, their clients.
Absolutely. We'll certainly pass that on. And we do the unveiling of the vehicle, we're going to try to use that as a public opportunity to, to really get a lot of information out there with all of our partners and to spread the word about the program as well.
I just wanted to thank you too. I think that you, you know, I think you deserve a lot of credit here. You stepped in and you were very, very, you were very proactive in dealing with what was seen as a gap in service possibly and you addressed it very, very quickly and, you know, and I think it's working well. It's also establishing the partnerships, but I just, I just wanted to thank you for stepping forward because that was fast action and well done. And I think that, I think our community is stronger for it and I know we're going to continue to develop it. I hope we continue to develop it.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I concur.
Same. Congratulations.
That concludes my update.
That concludes your update. Okay, then we'll move on to council reports and actions. So again, if combine your advisory board's comments with your other comments so that we're all going together, why don't we start with Councilor?
Yeah, I just have one. It was the Airport Commission on, when did we have this meeting? July 15th. Probably the most exciting thing is that the June 2021 passenger traffic was at 113% of 2019 levels and was the busiest month of all time, not just since COVID, but like of all time at DRO. So that's exciting. The recovery seen through June at DRO is outpacing nationwide passenger recovery by approximately 50%. But as such, they're seeing some pressures on the terminal area and we looked at the adopted 2020 terminal area plan study, which outlines a long-term development plan for the terminal. You know, there's like phase one and phase two, it was adopted back in 2020. We're looking at a design proposal for part of phase one to hopefully help alleviate some of those pressures. So it's like phase point five that they're looking at. So a smaller scale, so we don't have to take on quite, you know, the big project of phase one, but will help with the terminal, you know, capacity, which we're really, even with the outdoor, because the outdoor space is now open and so that's helping a little bit, but there's still a ton of stress with the amount of traffic that's coming. And even with that, we're still like two years out from even being phase point five being done. And so we'll just see how it works with everything. But they're looking at that and then the rehab project for the runway is still on for 2022, so.
Do you still plan on using phase half, the point five phase with passenger fees?
Um, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I believe so. We didn't really, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I was just curious. Okay. I don't have any new business. Go ahead and discuss it.
Well, thank, thank you. So I attended the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting on July 12th and we started off by talking about drought. We, the staff are monitoring it pretty closely. They had a conversation with Parks and Rec, particularly around the golf course, to just be watching the water consumption, but not, no changes just yet. Their view is that our water rights on the Florida are in good shape as well with the Anamos. To give you an example of that, for the College Mesa in June, a five-year average, four gallons of water was 5.23 million gallons per day and in June. And in June of 2021, we were at 5.52 gallons per day. So the takeaway is that we are meeting our monthly supply. That's the first thing. There will be a note in the July utility bills, which will address the low precipitation in the community. And it will indicate that there's no supply issues to date, but we should be conserving where possible and keeping up. They are keeping an eye on our water quantity right now. We talked about the water, water treatment, the Water Resource Master Plan and the scenarios that SEH has recommended and had quite a few questions around that. And Jared and team will be answering those questions, I believe, in writing to all of council and to the board, bringing, so that was just questions coming from that. And we also discussed that the IAV is similar to how other boards recommend how tax dollars are used. Would like to bring to council some recommendations for how to pay for those capital improvement projects that will be needed, particularly on the water treatment, the existing water treatment facility, College Mesa, but also tapping any, creating any pipeline from Lake Nighthorse down to, and then connecting back up to College Mesa. So our next meeting will be August 2nd. They'll be doing a fair amount of work in between time on really draft master plan. And we also finally talked about bringing it to council and also trying to keep the project moving forward, but also having it be as robust a document. So I think there's still some hope that we can get it to council within, possibly that would be like the June, August 20th meeting maybe, if I've got, or 17th, I think it might be the 17th. That we would be looking, if not, then into September. And the other one was just, you know, we had in between time, I participated in the, as the liaison to the Community Relations Commission. But I just wanted the community to know that today we had one, our first kind of re-engagement with the advisory boards. And we started with the Community Relations Commission. And I found it very helpful to sit around the table and talk about issues that we're facing and kind of that alignment of what we need to be focusing on. And I just wanted to thank my fellow counselors for participating in that because I think it's needed for all of our boards to have that kind of discussion.
Councilor Yusuf? Well, I reported already on the two items that I had listed here, Chamber of Commerce and the Colorado Municipal League. And I'd rather not, since it's almost 10 o'clock, take up our time. But I did give reports on both of those during our city study session right before this, beginning of the meeting. So, yeah, I'd rather not repeat. Double.
Councilor Bosman?
Thank you, Mayor Bass. I attended the Southwest Council of Governments meeting on July 13th. That is, that was a special meeting. And it was primarily for broadband in rural areas. And they received eight responses for public-private partnerships. So maybe not so relevant to our city, but definitely relevant for our county. And the other meeting I had was the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, that was on July 14th. The items on that one, the strategic plan was discussed in more detail and updated thereof. And there were some revisions, so that will be addressed during the next meeting, similar to meeting. The other topic was the Anamis River Trail fencing. There was a request for fencing and had been going on for quite some time. It has to do with the Anamis River Trail. And then you have the Anamis River Trail, then you have the railroad tracks, and then you have this property. And they wanted to have it financed and paid for by the city. And the board decided not to approve that, so. The last one, which is an important one, I think, is they had a discussion about the combination, potential combination of Parks and Rec Board with the Natural Lands Board. And they basically voted not to go forward with the combined board. So that was their final decision or decision recommendation to the council, however we word that. So that was interesting to hear, that discussion. And they had very good positives and advantages and disadvantages for both. They had a very thorough, knowledgeable, open discussion. And it was really enjoyable to participate in that, not participate, to hear that discussion. So that was their final point. That's all I had. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Thank you. So I attended the Natural Land Preservation Board meeting on, what date was that? July 12th. And we had similar conversations as the Parks and Rec Board. So we discussed the draft 2021, 2025 Parks and Recreation Department Strategic Plan. And of course, not as much applies to the Natural Lands as it does to Parks and Rec, but those two groups share a dedicated sales tax, so we do have those discussions. And then they also talked about combining the Parks and Recs and Natural Lands Advisory Boards. And we're not particularly in favor of it, but we're open to the idea. So I saw in our email today that the Parks and Rec Board actually made a recommendation about that to city councils. So I will let the Natural Lands Board know that that's the case. And if they would like to make a recommendation from their next meeting, I'll give them a heads up about that so they can also do the same thing. We also talked about several other kind of like housekeeping things, like election of a new board chair and some project and program updates, so.
Could I suggest on that for both the Parks and Rec and the Natural Lands that we wait till our new director is on board and that that decision is made by council until we actually get their feedback?
I think we discussed that previously and I think.
You missed it, yeah.
That we all agreed that we would do that, but I think the board, so this way they're, they feel comfortable that their feelings about it are at least expressed. And then after the conference comes on, if they change their mind, they can still.
And just one extra comment. The Parks and Rec Board did suggest and recommend to have a membership on each other's boards just to have that feedback and that connection to tie it all back together. So that was pretty much their approach.
We, the way that the Natural Lands Board talked about it was doing a working committee. So the two chairs or two vice chairs or whatever, we every so often, and then take that information back. Obviously, they're both of the like mind that the communication.
Yep, and actually you might, you might on that term, subcommittee, because I received the summary and I think they did mention the subcommittee option. So thank you for clarifying.
Any other comments, thoughts, questions? All right, then. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.